Found the station.
Found it?
Your city's ready?
Yeah.
Got it?
Good. Excellent. Sarah made it happen.
Losing all this prime time viewers, you're switching channels now, looking for a better town.
She went down to talk to Anders.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, well, sorry for the delay, a little technical delay from the TV camera downstairs, so I just wanted to make sure those guys were in order. So I'd like to call this meeting of the December 6, 2007 School Board Meeting to order. So doing, Sarah, would you mind leading us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, omnipotent, and just as for all.
Welcome, everyone, it's great to see a live audience right in the room here. As is customary, I will now read the district's mission statement. The Newmarket School District is committed to the highest standards of quality education by creating a safe and successful learning community that embraces diversity and responds to the social, emotional, intellectual, and physical needs of every child. We are dedicated to fostering links to the broader community to ensure that students develop lifelong skills enabling them to be contributing and productive members of society. Again, welcome, everyone. There's usually there's a choice of seats here and it's nice to see the room so full. At this point, I'd like to invite any visitors that would like to make comment regarding the this evening's agenda to step to the microphone. Mike, I know that you were interested in speaking this evening?
Yes.
Come on up.
Good evening. I'm Michael St. Laurent, I'm a longtime resident of Newmarket over 20 years. Cough tonight, if I have to cough, please excuse me in advance. A proud parent of two children, coach, the winter track team, and local business owner of downtown local sports. I'm here tonight representing my wife Linda and myself regarding the recent reading of a personal email from my wife Linda to Heidi Chase. The subject was regarding the spring track program at Newmarket and the athletic director, Randy Edgerly. As a member of the board, Mr. Jabonski, who read that email, I think you should know better than to use personal emails. They come from a secondhand source, whatever your agenda might be. And, Mr. Jabonski, this email was not directed to you, nor was it intended for you to read, nor was it intended for you to read out loud. Nevertheless, you did read it at a public hearing. Reading secondhand emails without permission really constitutes a grave disrespect for this school board, its rules, procedures, and its protocol. Your presence here is at the permission of the voters, and might I remind you that we'd like you to act a responsible manner and not read other people's emails? Finally, I think you disrespected the privacy of two families within the town that add a lot to this community, and I think it alienates your status here as a board member. And there are a lot of people that really don't like to listen to other people's emails being read. Enough being said about that. I've had the opportunity to work with Randy Edgerly for three seasons now as a coach and as a parent, and many, many times have gone to him with things for the track program or the cross-country program, and he's always responded positively in working with me. We've had our differences, but we've worked them out. And I really don't want personal emails read that construe us as a family being opposed at odds with Randy Edgerly because we work very hard to maintain a very good professional relationship. And finally, we've been privileged to have two wonderful children that have been in the school system, my son Kevin, who's now at UNH, and my daughter, who is a senior. And I want to commend the school system on doing a great job with our kids, and we loved having our kids in our schools here. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mike. I'd like to make a couple comments. I share your concerns, and on behalf of the board, and particularly as chair, I apologize for my role as chair in this matter. The agenda is the chair's responsibility, so I feel that that's appropriate. The email, just so that's clear, the email in question was unknown to me until the reading of it at the last meeting, and sharing a document without permission in such a public forum, I agree, is inappropriate. The privacy of your family, my family, and athletic director have been, in fact, violated, and it's put the board in an awkward situation, and it's been a distraction. It's one of my biggest problems with it. We've got other things to do. It's been a big distraction for many people, and so for my unwitting role in this, I apologize. In the future, I'll do a better job of making sure that there's proper review of topics that are presented in this setting. When we get to the policy review section in this meeting, which we're going to move a little bit later, given the number of kids here that might need to finish their homework before it gets too late, we'll talk briefly about some of those policies, just so that we have a refresher regarding that. So thank you, and if anyone would like to speak briefly to this before our discussion later regarding the policy, I'd be welcome to allow you to do so at this time. Okay, are there any other comments from the visitors this evening? It's a quiet room. Okay, in the, well, regarding the flow of the meeting, what I'd like to do is some kind of business things with respect to approving the minutes from our last meeting, and then move straight to the program piece regarding the football program, which is why you're all here, not interested in as much in our calendar or other issues very late in our meeting. So we'll move that bit of the program forward and then take the rest of it in chronological order as it's shown in the agenda, unless there's any protest to that. Okay.
Then I will make a motion to approve the minutes from the November 15th School Board meeting?
Second.
I just have one thing that I noticed on the minutes, and I wasn't sure if it needed to be changed, it's just a number.
Okay.
On the page five, under the Business Department update. I think it just, the first line, it said the current tax rate was .5 lower than the estimated .56, I think it's .05. I don't know if that matters, I just heard people correcting it before. Okay.
It's five cents less.
Technically, it does, absolutely.
Okay.
Thanks for your attention to detail. That's great. I also had on middle of page two regarding something that I, a comment that I made about two-thirds of the way down the page maybe, Cliff Chase asked who'd be more likely to use the online survey. My inclination was that senior citizens might be less likely to retrieve the survey via online, not that they wouldn't know how to, just offer that as a clarification. It's not as common for more senior folks to spend all their time at the computer as someone else might. Any other corrections or? Okay, hearing none, all those in favor of the minutes as lightly amended signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, we have non-public meeting minutes as well?
And I'll make a motion to accept the non-public meeting minutes from the November 15th meeting.
I'll second that motion.
Any discussion? Okay, all those in favor of the non-public meeting minutes of November the 15th, 2007, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, thank you. So now, we'd like to move to the discussion of the joint football program. Deb, would you like to get that started?
Good evening, and thank you for moving us up on the agenda. There are some, I'm sure, that have some homework to do tonight, right? I'm here this evening because I've been in Newmarket, this is my 11th year, and we have worked really diligently to expand offerings for young people, and my concentration has been on expanding curriculum for young people. I'm very pleased with the number of advanced placement courses that we offer now at Newmarket. I've learned this year that we offer some that other school districts that are larger than us and very close to us don't have. So we've worked diligently, but we've also worked to enhance what young people do after school hours. And since I've been in Newmarket for the 11 years, I have been asked by so many parents and so many young people, do we have a football program? And I'm very much aware that we have lost several young people to St. Thomas and other surrounding schools that have either football or ice hockey, those have been the two that young people and parents have mentioned. Well, we checked into having a football team about five or six years ago, and we learned from the NHIAA that it would cost us about $62,000 to do so. As you know, equipment for football teams is very expensive, and we just felt at that time that that was cost prohibitive for Newmarket and that we would not be able to offer that. This fall, we have had a wonderful offer from a neighboring school district, and that's Epping. Epping has had Fremont as one of their school districts that input young people into the high school, grades nine through 12. And during that period of time with an increased population, they were able to offer a football program. They started that program about six years ago, and has been funded by the Epping School District and a very, very active booster club. With Fremont students being in Epping, and this is their last year to be in the Epping School District, they're now going to be housed in the Sanborn Regional High School, they felt that there was an opening to enhance their football team because of numbers. They also support fall sports such as soccer for both women and men, and decided that perhaps a cooperative venture between two smaller schools might be a wonderful way to give young people an opportunity to play. So the Epping football coach approached Mr. Edgerly and Mr. Hayes, our two athletic directors and the assistant, and said, would we be interested? The first question that we had to find out was, would the state accept a cooperative football team between two districts? We have talked to Pat Corbin, who is the Executive Director of the New Hampshire Interscholastic Athletic Association, and he asked us to meet last Thursday with the Football Committee for the State of New Hampshire. They were very open to the fact of a cooperative team, there are other cooperative teams in the State of New Hampshire in football, and they were very open to that idea. So we are here tonight to tell you some facts about that and hope that you might consider that. I wanted to know as a principal, how many students do I actually have at the junior, senior high school that would be interested in playing football? So I put a sign up for three days in the main office and said, if you're interested, and if we ever had a football team, and you're in grades eight through 12, pardon me, eight through 11, I did not ask for sixth and seventh graders, I know we have football players in those two grade levels, but I was looking forward to if we started next fall, what would the population look like? We had 41 youngsters sign up. Out of that 41, three of whom are soccer players, so we were very relieved to see that we would not be taking away from our soccer program by offering a football program to our students. Three of the students are cross-country runners, and one student is a golfer. But more importantly for me as an educator, was the fact that out of those 41 youngsters, 27 of those youngsters have never played in any sports program in Newmarket. So that tells me that if we did have a cooperative venture with Epping, that that would provide an opportunity for 27 young people that I know of today that could go out for a sport and be involved in an activity that promotes physical fitness, that promotes teamwork, and competitive sports participation after school hours. What would that look like for Newmarket? Epping and Newmarket would equally have say about that team. We would have to come up with a new name that included both Newmarket and Epping. We jokingly spoke today with Epping representative that maybe since Newmarket is red and black, and Epping is blue and white, maybe the new team might have colors of red and blue. But that would be determined by parents, community members, our students, and our educators. We would bus our students to Epping for practice. We do not have a field, but Epping does have a football field, so the practices would be conducted in Epping. And we feel very fortunate that Epping has had a football coach there that is not only a football coach, but served as the resource officer in that school district for several years, is an Epping police person, and has donated many, many hours to young people in Epping. So we feel very fortunate that our students would get the benefit of a coach that has had lots of experience. It also does something else for Newmarket. When you start a new team, whether it be a golf program, a soccer program, or football, the State of New Hampshire does not allow you to go right into a varsity program. They may bless the team and say, fine, but you start out as a junior varsity team for two years. After that two-year period of time, then and only then can your young people then participate in a varsity program. If we would join the cooperative venture with Epping, that means that my students that are currently juniors will be seniors next year, would have the opportunity to earn a varsity letter in football should they make the team and participate. We would not, Newmarket residents, would not have to go through a two-year period of time to be a junior varsity team, we would just walk right into the varsity schedule. The Newmarket School Board has already blessed this cooperative venture and has unanimously voted that they would approve that. Now, pardon me, the Epping School District has unanimously, I guess it's wishful thinking on my part, the Epping School District has unanimously approved that, and so what we are looking for is your approval. The cost factor, I know is a question in your mind, and it is out of mind because we have a concern for our taxpayers. Mr. Hayes and Mr. McFadden have a detailed list, but to give you an overall, because Epping has so invested in so much equipment to date, they have set a budget that Epping would contribute $10,000, Newmarket would contribute $10,000, and the booster clubs of both communities would raise $10,000. This has worked very, very well in Epping for the past six years, so they think that budget is very, very reasonable. With that said, I would like to introduce Jamie Hayes, who is our Assistant Athletic Director, and Rich McFadden, who is currently in the position of Coach of the Epping Football Team, because I think these two gentlemen may be able to address some of your questions. Gentlemen, you want to join me up here?
So if you'd like to ask questions, you may do so, he has a budget, if you would like to see that.
Do you? Okay.
That would be great. Maybe you could walk through that?
Sure. What is being passed around is a detailed budget for the 2008 Epping-Newmarket cooperative football team. At the present time, there are, Epping has 55 to 60 sets of equipment. Adding more players would constitute adding to the equipment. The problem with football is that just because you have 60 sets of equipment doesn't mean you can outfit 60 people, because you have to fit the players properly. You know, you can throw an extra-large uniform on someone, you can't throw an extra-large helmet or shoulder pads on a smaller kid. So there has to be enough equipment to fit the wide range of student size you may have. So we have asked for extra 20 to 25 sets of equipment with helmets, shoulder pads, and so on. There's also 60 uniforms, the new team would not be Epping Blue Devils anymore, there would be a Newmarket-Epping, whatever you have for the mascot. So then, there would be, you would need a new set of uniforms, so that is in there. And then, it's, you know, adding to the chin straps and the knee pads and the hip pads and adding practice uniforms with the addition of new players, game balls and mouth guards and some extra practice equipment, tackling dummies and those things. And those items would be a one-year, first-year cost, startup cost. And after that, the only cost that the two districts would be responsible for is the same items that every other sport would receive, would be game balls, would be officials, transportation, coaches, and I believe that's it. And a yearly reconditioning of equipment after a season, all the equipment has to be sent out, fixed, repaired, and recertified for the next season. So those would be the costs, yearly costs after that, to be split by the two districts. Are there any questions so far? Okay. Another issue that I'm not sure that Ms. Brooks made clear or not is that NHIA policy does not allow a school to add to another existing program to make it a cooperative program. So this is a unique experience for this year, they're going to allow Newmarket-Epping to do this because the Fremont students are leaving Epping. So they're seeing, there's, the NHIA sees Epping losing a district almost with the Fremont students leaving, so that's why they're going to allow the Newmarket students to play there in this instance. We couldn't just send our kids to Exeter if this doesn't work out or any other existing program. It has, it can only be a brand-new team unless its special circumstances are granted. So especially for this year, this will be a unique experience. If it doesn't happen this year, instead of us contributing $10,000, as Ms. Brooks said, it would be $62,000 next time we wanted to start. And also with us having to try to find field space and waiting two years for a JV program. So any student that we had sign up, those 41 students that we had sign up, would never be able to play a varsity down in football, because they'd have to wait two years and the process of getting everything done and put together. So I think it's a great experience. I was the Athletic Director at Epping High School when Rich started the program, and he's done a great job. In 2006, they won the Football Officials Association Sportsmanship Award, that banner will be going up in Epping High School tomorrow, so that just shows you the type of program that Rich is running and the values that he has. And so I think it's also a great experience for us to be able to send our students over to a program that holds the same values that we hold here in Newmarket. A couple other opportunities our students would get is, Rich and his coaching staff has the weight room open five days a week in Epping. Once this has, if this does happen and it is committed to, they have said that they would allow our students to go over there and start using the weight room. And Rich told us today that one of his captains would like to start to do some things with the Newmarket kids so they can truly become a team, and not just show up in August, but they will know each other pretty well throughout the offseason also. Any other questions? Or any questions?
Linda?
Thank you. Couple of things. What division are, is Epping currently in?
Well, that kind of holds imbalance of what we do. We would put them up into Division Five. We would put them into Division Five, without us, they would be in Division Six. It's a reclassification year for football also, which is another unique experience for us coming in. Since it is that, that's one reason they're willing to consider us to join the Epping program, because it's a reclassification year. They're adding a sixth division and, okay. So without, without the Newmarket students, they would be Division Six, and with the Newmarket students, they would be Division Five. So the part of the state is waiting for a decision from us so they can schedule, and the football people in the state are very regimented of when they get their schedules done, and they like to have a timeline, but they have put things on hold for us. So that's, it's either Division Five or Division Six to answer your question.
So does that work similarly as the, I'm not familiar with how the football classification works, I'm assuming sixes would be more like a Class S and?
Yes, it's the smallest division, yes, it is, and it does go by numbers. And then a cooperative team, they would combine the two enrollments of the school, and that's what the number we would submit as the Epping-Newmarket team.
Okay, thank you. I'm curious, roughly how many players do you like to have, like for the entire team? I don't mean just how many play at one time, but like how big of a group?
A very good number would be at least, minimum of 45. We've been showing up on the sidelines with anywhere from 25 dressed, at the highest point this year was 36. When our program was started, six years ago, we were in the 40s, 42 to 44 players. So over the years, we have been losing people each and every season, because it wasn't just a one-time transition of losing the Fremont students, we've lost them grade level by grade level.
Right.
And this year's graduating seniors are the last Fremont students. So to answer your question, 45 is a very manageable number, but we've played some schools that have over 60 kids in their programs.
And is that 45 a combination of JV and varsity, or is that 45 really just the varsity?
No, we don't separate the two, other than the games that they play. We practice as one team, we do everything together through preseason camp in the summer, all the way through the schedule. Typically, what'll happen is JV games are Monday afternoons, and usually the underclassmen are playing in the JV games. Varsity games are either Friday nights or Saturdays, and varsity starters don't dress for JV games, but yet all the JV kids will dress for varsity, just in case it's a lopsided game and they do get an opportunity to play, and they really look forward to that.
And also, I'm curious, you know, because we don't have a football program, many of our students wouldn't have any experience with football, with playing football, so I'm wondering if, is that a, you know, is that a worry or concern in terms of, you know, learning the game and learning how to play and that kind of thing?
For me, no, because we've been having new kids without experience come in every year for all of our six years. In fact, this year, I had first-year seniors come out, and by the end of the year, they were varsity starters. It just takes them a little bit longer than someone who has been playing for a number of years. But the physical size and maturity of a 17 or 18-year-old senior is far more advanced than that of a 14 or 15-year-old freshman. So by the time they do take to learn the sport, they're just a better fit for a varsity program. It just takes them a little bit longer. It's quite a learning curve to come into a football program if you've never played before, but the coaching staff has been working with these kids diligently, and they do benefit from it. Not only does it show on the practice field and in football, but just in their self-esteem and grades and the way they feel about themselves in their school, it's really been a benefit to a lot of our students. These are kids who wouldn't play any other fall sport, a lot of them just because of their physical size. Soccer's not their thing, and neither is cross-country. So some of the kids we have, you know, six foot two, 280 pounds, there really aren't a lot of options out there for them, but they really flourish in a football program.
Thanks.
Can I just add to that? Another thing that Rich didn't mention is that he and his staff volunteer their time during the summer, and they run a preseason camp before the official season actually starts, so any new student or new player has the opportunity to come in and learn, you know, all the way basics down to what's a three-point stance, you know, everything, so that they come into the preseason, they have some experience with terminology and basics. And also, I know we have a lot of, not a lot, but some students that play in Dover in elementary and junior high levels, and they get to the high school, and some of them go on to St. Thomas and leave us or Exeter, and some of them just stop playing football. And also, Epping does have a feeder system, they run it cooperatively with Sanborn and Epping combined for that. If a program were to go through two... If a program were to go through to combine our two towns, uh, the, the plan would be to, uh, combine Epping and New Market for the, for the feeder program to play in the Seacoast Football League. Um, and then Sam Bourne would go on their own. So it'd be a great opportunity for our younger students, uh, to get it, to get the experience before they got to high school. And I believe, I know we already have flag football in this town and, um, I believe that starts in, is it fifth grade, fourth grade? Third and fourth for, for, for flag? What about tackles, fifth?
Tackles, fifth.
All right. So third and fourth for flag and then fifth and sixth and seventh and eighth. Uh, so they start all the way, third and fourth, learning, um, basics and then becoming to tackle and, and all the way up to high school.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
I mind were answered in that.
I have several. If I may. Have we figured transportation, practice transportation costs into that or is that? Thank you. Have we figured practice transportation cost into that ten thousand or is that something we're gonna take care of out of the athletic, athletic budget?
Um, well, no, it's not figured into the ten thousand. Um, now, there's, it, it, we did call, uh, first student and it would be ninety dollars a day, um, for the minimum trip fee. Um, another thing that we also can do with, uh, combined trips, uh, in the fall, we send a lot of teams out the Epping way. They can stop at Epping and drop, drop the, the twenty to forty players, whatever, and then take the middle school soccer team on or the, you know, if, when we play, um, even next year, we're gonna keep Epping on our schedule in all of our sports. We can, we can, um, drop the players off and then, and then, uh, you know, go on to the game from there. So some of it will be built into the budget already. And also at times, we don't run JV soccer or, or other things. Uh, we feel there's enough money in there that we, that we can take care of that and what we already have.
Um, would I, if we do this, would we anticipate that we would need an memorandum of understanding between the two districts to, you know, a certain terms of the financials and the organizational pieces?
I would strongly recommend that and, and, and as it addresses, um, the financial aspect as well as insurance, liability, all of those things. We'll need to, we'll need to sit down with the superintendent and iron those things out, those details out.
You answered my question about participants. I think the interest level forty-one is, is, a lot of it's evident here, of course. Um, and out of that forty-one, you'll, you'll get, should get a solid slice of that. Will NHIA issue us an appro- on a formal approval letter when they're ready to do this?
Once they're waiting to see if New Market is
Once, if we agree to do it, they're gonna issue us approval?
I would say to you also, excuse me, um, there are a lot of things that have to be ironed out.
Okay.
We need your approval to start that process. Um, things like eligibility. The state, as you know, has an eligibility rule. Well, New Market has a different eligibility rule with higher standards. Epping has another eligibility rule. So what we would have to explain to parents is that we would honor the eligibility rule of New Market for New Market students and we would honor the eligibility rules for Epping for Epping students. So there are a lot of things, that's one small example of something that we really need to commit to paper and have signatures from both superintendents and boards, um, because there are a lot of details that we would work out. But we did not want to go any further without your blessing.
That sort of just leads right into my next question. And not so much the issues of the nuts and bolts and eligibility, but, you know, the issues around combination, creating a new, you know, a new, a new, a new emotional entity, if you will, cause people have stakes in what happens in their community. Have you given any concrete thought to how you would come about developing the colors and the names and all of that kinds of things? Cause that, that's gonna carry some, you know, some weight, I would imagine, on both ends.
Definitely. And that's why I'd mentioned previously that the Booster Club in Epping has been very active. And I know we have lots of folks in New Market that would be anxious to serve on a Booster Club for football if we go this path. We would ask for their input, we would ask for student input from both schools, we'd ask for staff from both schools, athletic directors, coaches, and probably put out a vote, if you will, give several suggestions so that everybody knows we're practicing a democratic society, but yet everyone has a voice.
And I would assume that with, for practices, we, you know, we'd be leaving after school to go, there were not, you know, no dismissal for
No.
I mean, well, obviously there's early dismissal for games sometimes, things like that.
Sometimes, but very, usually they're on Saturdays.
Yeah.
So that's the good thing about a football program, they're generally on Saturdays.
Is there a cheer program at Epping along with this? Is there a fall cheer?
Yes, there is.
Is that a companion opportunity for New Market students and since we don't have fall cheer?
That would have to be brought to the NHIAA.
Right.
But actually the cheer
Just, just sort of putting it out there, cause it's just another something that we, we, we have it in our plans normally, but we don't normally have a fall program, so.
I, I, it should be equally for, for the males and the females, for cheerleading and for football, so. I know our cheerleading coaches are open to it and they've already asked me about it, so.
Oh, good. Great.
Um, that's my stuff.
Mr. Ranzel, just, just to back up for a second about practice time. Practice time is generally three-thirty to about quarter of six or so in Epping. Uh, one thing Rich and his staff also do is that, uh, the players lift two days a week, um, before practice and then they also have study hall two days a week. The JVs will lift two days and then the study hall, uh, the varsity players will be in study hall and then they'll, they'll flip, back, flip, flip-flop back and forth on those days.
And that's within that three-thirty to
That would be leading, that would be leading up from when our students arrive until three-thirty when they have to take the field. And then at three-thirty, they would take the field.
Okay.
So if our, if we had to leave right after school to get our students to, uh, a middle school soccer game, our ki- our students wouldn't have to sit around for an hour in Epping, uh, waiting for practice to start. They would have a place to, to be either in study hall or in the weight room.
Great.
Any other questions?
Yeah, uh, one question. Um, with the, uh, with the soccer program in New Market and also this being a drain prospect for that program, we've got enough, uh, male students to be able to do this?
Um, of the forty-one students that signed up, only three of them were soccer players. So we feel that even if those three left, it would not drain our soccer program. We were surprised that there were only three interested. So that shows me that there is a large group of young people that really wanna play football and who are not playing, and yet they're not playing any other sport either.
How many players we have on our soccer team right now, varsities?
Um, this season, I believe we had twenty-two, around there.
Two.
Yeah.
And normally, how many the team, teams have in our division?
Um, for the varsity programs?
Yes, yes.
They tend, generally have eighteen, plus or minus, yeah. Um, one thing, I can speak to that. We, when I was the athletic director at Epping and, and I helped Rich start the program, um, there was a big concern for what's gonna happen to the soccer program. Um, and again, it's, there's a couple that will go, um, but, uh, a lot of times, those are kids that, um, I know one of the students that signed up to play football, one of our soccer players, is a student that played football all the way up until, um, ninth grade. And we didn't have an opportunity for him to play football, so he went over to soccer. Um, generally, it's a, it's a different type of athlete that plays soccer compared to football. And, um, I know the Epping boy soccer program is stronger than it's ever been, uh, with, with, uh, coexisting with football.
I have a suggestion. Um, I just, I know that when you, um, having played sports when I was in high school, it's a, it's a great way to learn how to balance your time, especially when you're transitioning into the, the post-high school years. And I just didn't know if, um, how, and if we could maybe have, since all these people showed up, some of the students speak to how they feel about taking on this added responsibility. It's gonna eat up a lot of their time after school and do they feel that, obviously, they must feel that they can handle it, but just maybe getting a little input from, from the students? I don't know if that's something we can do.
That would be great. I'd, I'd be interested in if any, um, any students would, would have anything they'd like to share, um, while they or parents.
Or parents.
Yes, thank you. Um, I have a couple of questions though, maybe as they pose their thoughts. Um, Deb, you spoke to, um, you know, the differences in academic eligibility in the different towns. Um, I don't know, maybe Rich, you can speak to, um, the, I know some sports can be very motivating for kids to, you know, keep their grades up, to stay in, um, being able to play basketball or whatever sport, um, they're interested. Can, I mean, can you speak to that? Have you found it to be particularly motivating for kids to?
For the most part, we've had a few success stories, some real at-risk kids who may not have graduated high school. I, I can think of two in particular that, um, this did help them get through high school. And in a perfect world, sports shouldn't get a kid through high school, but circumstances as they were, we were able to get a couple of kids who may not have graduated otherwise to finish high school and get their diploma. Um, they, they didn't go on to college and ever played a Donna football after that, but, um, you know, it's not uncommon for us to be having practice and you'll see kids who graduated three, four, five years ago, come back to the field. It is kind of a family atmosphere with us at Epping. So we've had some great success stories of these kids getting through high school as well as, um, the study halls that we do during the school year. We want to, and get the, especially these freshmen, get them off on the right foot. Um, so having our seniors, we've got, uh, student body presidents, honor society members on, on the football team as well. And they really take a leadership role with these kids, the younger kids, and mentor them and make sure they're eligible. Because in such a small school, they really come to rely on these younger kids. If it wasn't for that, uh, those underclassmen, we couldn't have competitive practices and that wouldn't prepare the varsity athletes for their games. So it really is like a family atmosphere and they look out for one another. And, um, our fall sports numbers have increased and we have a no pass, no play situation in Epping. If a kid fails one course in the fourth quarter, they go on academic probation. They have to, uh, do mandatory progress reports every two weeks and have to sit out their first two games. So that's kind of a stiff penalty for them to pay. So these kids just don't pay attention during the football season. They really pay attention in that fourth quarter because those are grades that affect their eligibility in the fall.
Thanks. Um, I've done a little bit of reading recently with, um, antibiotic-resistant staph infections and I understand that, um, particularly hockey and football programs, there's, um, that's, that's where they're, they're seeing, um, more issues, uh, more problems. And, uh, I'm, I'm curious as to what happens with the uniforms between practices and, you know, what, um, I, I know that, you know, if left unto themselves, they certainly don't smell very good. But, um, but more seriously, these multiple resistant staph are, sounds like they're a, um, a significant and growing problem.
You're right. This year it was an issue, not just in New Hampshire, but across, uh, the country. What we do is the, uh, the reconditioning that Jamie Hay spoke of just a few minutes ago, all of our equipment is sent out. It's not only recertified, but it's sanitized in the offseason. So it comes back to a sanitary, it's cleaned and it is, um, certified, it's safe for the kids to be using. What we do in Epping is we have a new team room in our new gymnasium as well as a new locker room. At the end of the day, there can be nothing on the floor. All of the floors are cleaned and sterilized and sanitized. Um, the equipment has to be up and in their locker. Um, we ask them to air dry it when they get in. You, our air, our lockers are all vented. Um, and every Saturday, every player has to take all of their equipment home to be cleaned, uh, and brought back on Monday, cleaned and sanitized. And we tell them how to clean it and to wipe it down and what type of, uh, antibacterial stuff they need to use and that. As well as we have the antibacterial stuff right in the locker room for us when we go into the locker room, we ask them to clean their hands off. And when they leave at the end of the day, we ask them to use the antibacterial stuff, uh, to take care of their hands, just as a precaution. So we had no problems with it this season and I don't anticipate that we will. And another's point is, um, there's going to be a lot of new equipment purchased for this program. Um, and our equipment, some of it is six years old and some of it's within the four, the two-year range. We add a little bit of equipment every year to keep our stuff current and, uh, and up to date and functioning properly.
Thanks. Um, my last question is regarding the Booster Club. It seems, you know, there's, there's a lot of, or, small and large organizations, the senior class every year is raising money. Ten thousand dollars, sounds to me like a lot of money. Can you speak to how easy it is for that fundraising effort? Is it a different angle that, uh, is taken or how does that work?
Now, what we do is we have a pay-to-play program in, in, in our program. Every kid pays a hundred dollars to play. And when you have forty kids, there's four thousand dollars you've raised right there. Um, no one is turned away for financial reasons. We do waive that for people who cannot afford the, to pay. And then we just ask them that they do a little bit more on our fundraising efforts. Uh, concessions are quite a, an income source for us on all of our home games, both varsity and JVs. The Booster Club runs a full concession stand. Um, we have a gold card sale that we do every year and we make about three thousand dollars in the gold card sale alone with thirty to forty kids. So when you add more players registering to play, the registration money comes up, there's more parents attending the games, the concession income comes up as well as the gold card sales come up. And if we find that we're falling short, we just add another fundraiser at the end of the year or we start raising funds earlier in the season. For instance, uh, being from Epping, the New England Dragway is right in town. We've run many fifty-fifty raffles in there that bring seven hundred to a thousand dollars in one three-hour stint at the Dragway. So you're walking around selling tickets, but, uh, you're earning your place to play on the team as well.
Great, thank you.
You're welcome.
Does Epping have a pay-to-play for all of its sports or just for football?
No, just football because football is the only sport that is not entirely funded by the school district.
So I would assume that would be a similar expectation of the New Market kids.
So that hundred dollars per player counts towards that ten thousand of fundraised funds? Is that what I'm hearing?
Yes.
Okay.
Any other questions? Okay, um.
Final comment?
Sure thing.
I, I guess I, I really feel strongly that after having been a educator for twenty-five years, that what we do during the seven-hour school day is very important. But what happens to young people after school, I find to be equally important and has a big bearing on not only our community, but our society in general. The busier we can keep young people, the better it is for all young people. So I would urge you to really consider this. Thank you.
Thank you. I'd encourage you, if there's anyone, uh, else in the room who'd like to, uh, to speak to, uh, the program, please, uh, step to the microphone.
I'd like to say the hundred dollars.
If you could go over to the microphone, then, then they can hear you at home as well.
I'd say the hundred dollars that it costs to do football is a lot cheaper than Seacoast Titans, I played for two years. It was like two hundred and fifty dollars to play. And then next year, if you go to banquet, you can get a discount of fifty dollars for two hundred dollars, so it's much cheaper doing this. And it's closer by.
Good point.
Of the, of the young men si- go ahead, keep on, I, of the young men sitting here, how many of you have played some sort of organized football before? Or are playing?
I would like to say something about, um, former football. Um, I came from school, I used to play sports all year round, wrestling in the winter, football in the summer. Um, I know that I moved here in sixth grade and I was really upset that we didn't have a football program. And when I heard that we were getting a football program, it really, you know, really made me happy because I thought that I could look forward to something after school, I could, something to keep me busy.
Thank you. Thanks.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Joe Valinsky. Uh, my son Jacob has been playing actually for, uh, for Dover, the rec league for the last three seasons now. Uh, for the last two seasons, actually playing with their, basically the junior, junior varsity team, uh, junior high, what they call the little wave team. Uh, it's been a very good experience for him. Uh, in addition to that, he plays the basketball at this present time and, uh, um, but I'm just saying, you, somebody had mentioned about, uh, the, the time spent and the balancing between schoolwork and, and football. And it is like any other sport and, and, uh, it does take some, some balance and some, some hard work. But they, I know Dover has been very good about stressing grades, good grades and how important that is, uh, for the student-athlete, um, to the point that they're keeping track of their grades. And if they, if they don't meet the grades, they don't play and, um, anyway, it's, it's been a good experience for Jacob and he looks forward every season to, to playing that. He just finished up, uh, recently. He just finished up recently. And I think it'd be a, it's a great opportunity for New Market. And then there's other friends of his I know, Mike Symes is another one that's been playing out in Dover as well. So yeah, there are kids I think that would, that would like to play and that are playing currently. And I know that there is also what a Sea Coast Football League, a Pop Warner League as well. So there are kids that are already playing and getting experience and that's, that's it.
Thank you.
Thanks, Joe.
I've never played football on a team, but I've been playing for my whole life. I love the game of football. The only time I play football, I play is with friends in my neighborhood. But having the chance to play the sport that I love on a team representing my school would just be a really good opportunity.
Thanks.
Hello, I'm Steve Espo and some of you know me from basketball. I just took over for Paul Brangell for the rec program locally. But I also represent the Sea Coast Titans. I coach with them and I have two of my sons here, Daniel, my older one, and Jeremy, and I have another one at home that also plays and has, they've been playing for quite some time. Oldest one played for four years already. And I don't mind losing him to hopefully a program like this because I'm looking forward to that. I, we had contemplated what to do and we were told when we were looking for a place to live, when we moved to New Hampshire from Southern California, New Market was not one of the places to go because my older ones have both played football for two years before moving out here. And to hear news like this is, is good news for us, especially for my older ones that are, Daniel's going to be going to ninth grade next year. And for the Sea Coast Titans, we stop after the age of 15 and most of our kids, and we have a lot of kids that are more coming from New Market and a lot in the Durham and Lee areas that don't have football either. And they've run out of opportunity after that and most of these kids are playing football, some are playing basketball, but other than football, they have nothing left after that for Lee, for Madberry, Durham, that don't have this also. And we had contemplated what we would do, move, send our kids to St. Thomas or whatnot and leave the district also, the school district also because there is no football for them. To hear this is actually really good news for us. We hope that you guys really consider this. And again, for our older ones, you know, it's a huge thing to have this opportunity to play and just, I know they're looking forward to it and I hope that that, that comes to fruition. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else like to speak? Okay.
I just wanted to encourage, oh.
A little late, but it's eight o'clock, so I guess I'm right on time. For those who don't know me, my name's Steve Cooper. My son is a freshman in New Market. We've been here for like 14 years. I coached for two years, years ago, for the Sea Coast Titans. Stephen played for, as he got older, unfortunately in the high school level, I guess his commitment to football went away. He does track and field now across country, but you know, he still desires to play football. I think it's, it would be a big boost in the school and the community as a whole to come together closer as we already are with all kinds of other programs that are going on in this town. But just the volume of, of the motivation in the kids to give them something else to do would be huge. Going over to the Sea Coast Titans over in Dover, you just meet a great bunch of people that are just committed to football, their kids, you know, the after-school stuff regarding, you know, Sea Coast Titans, kids couldn't play unless they had a C-plus average back when I coached, I'm not sure how it is now. Helping each other out, I mean, you just have another different type of family. And I think, you know, I'm not sure what the agenda is here tonight, I was just advised to come here and to speak because of the issue, but I just think as a whole, if we're able to push this through for the kids and for the town, it'd be, it'd be huge. That's all I have to say. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
And I just wanted to say to everyone in the room that, you know, we're, when we make the decision on, you know, how we're going to approach this, it's critical that you let your friends and neighbors know how important this is to you in March when they come out to vote. So please, you know, let, you know, students, let your fellow students know how important football is to you and how, how much you want to play and encourage them to talk to their parents about it and let their parents know, you know, New Market has this opportunity, but it's, it's going to take, it's going to take the town's support. So we really need to rally the rest of the town. We've got a great showing here tonight, but you know, I encourage you all to rally your friends and neighbors around this program as well.
Would you care to entertain a motion, Mr. Chairman?
Sure.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve the funding of $10,000 for a football program for the coming year, that we enter into it in a one-year memorandum, memorandum of understanding with the school district of Epping. And we do that so that we can gauge its success for the first year and, you know, make sure that we're, have something viable going forward into, in future years should we continue.
Is it possible to do one year or is it supposed to be a two-year agreement, I thought? I thought that was what it said on the NHI.
The, the NHIAA classification cycle is two years. However, I'm not certain that we are bound by that in our participation. However, you know, having, keeping that in mind, I'll amend my motion to two years.
I'll second that.
Any discussion? Chuck, what do you think?
In other words, you want $10,000 right now, that's what you're saying?
Well, it is my belief, remembering the budget sessions, that it is already included in the budget. That we have, that money is earmarked in the budget, but we left it pending this discussion whether we were going to, whether we were going to take it out or leave it in.
I thought we were going to have it as a warrant article.
It's currently, my understanding is it's not listed as a, as a budget item, is it?
It's not, we did pull it out?
We pulled it out. We did pull it out.
We did not, it's not in the budget because the decision was made, one, would you approve the program and two, how would you like to fund it? And you can do it two ways. You can embed the $10,000 into the budget as part of your 1,400 series around athletics or two, you can create a warrant article for $10,000 and seek community approval for that warrant article. That decision is yours. I think there's really two steps here. One, to approve the request and two, to decide how you want to procure those funds.
So your motion is still active?
My motion is to add that to the budget for the following reasons. If we, if we do it as a warrant article, we will not have a definitive and final answer until March. And if we wait that long, we cannot, we cannot approach that for the coming year. The NHIAA will set its leagues and they will move forward. So I mean, we're caught in a bit of a time pinch in terms of trying to make the process flow as it has to unfortunately. And while I understand your point, from my standpoint, if, if we're going to look at this for next year, I believe we have to make that decision as a board and as a budget and what we want to support and show the community that we want to support as opposed to a warrant article. And also I'm not certain that, you know, the provision of a single, of a single program necessarily is, I'll be honest, I don't want to get into, I don't want to set a precedent that if the board believes that a program has value and merit for our students and for the community, that as much as I value the voters and value their opinion, that every little thing should become a warrant article in and of itself. I think that that, you know, we have, we have a budget, we are elected to make these decisions based on the best information that we can get and, and that we have and of course tempered by our own personal beliefs. And the thing that swayed me on this, and I'll be honest what it was, was the fact that there were 25 names in that list that had never participated in any other athletics at the school and had probably, and probably were not necessarily involved in other extracurriculars that were identifiable. Knowing that involvement in a school activity outside of the regular day, I don't care whether it's a sport, drama, music, the stamp club, you name it, whatever it is, it is the number one predictor of student success, bar none. And right below that is attendance, but that overall predictor is student participation. And 25 students, even if half of them, and I'll be honest with you, I figure out of that 41, half will actually play. I'm a bit of a cynic, but that's, I think that's the reality of it. And let's say 10 of those aren't, haven't done something before. You're approaching 1% of our school population real quickly right there with those 10 kids. That's, that's a big jump with one, one activity. So that's, that's the logic behind my proposal, my motion.
I'm not against the youngsters playing football, I understand, but I am concerned about adding more to the budget. And I think the people should make that decision.
Well, you, you spoke to, you know, adding it as a warrant article would delay the process of the NHIAA knowing, but in fact, if we put it into our budget for the next school fiscal year and the budget in fact does not pass, if we're in a default budget situation, we wouldn't be able to fund that program.
That's right. That's correct.
So either way, we can't make a huge commitment. I mean, we can make, it's certainly a statement of support.
That's what bothers me right there is I'm saying adding something to the budget. I just, I just think there's too many variables there. I'd like to see it as a warrant article.
And I know that the budget committee supported that notion too of having this as a separate warrant article as opposed to having it as part of the budget. And I think that, that the thought for, for some of those was, some of the people on the budget committee is that this really is such a huge community commitment. It's not, I mean, it's, it's not just the money. This is a whole new, you know, you know, having come, grown up in Exeter, I mean, football is, you know, it's a community event. It's a huge undertaking, not just, so I think that that was kind of why they wanted to separate it from the budget as well. Personally, I, I think that it's gonna, well, you know what, no, I'm not going to say that.
The other issue to think about is that if you put it on the, the budget and you get all of the support from the community coming out for the football, you're also getting them more aware of the school budget and the issues with the school and maybe getting more people to get involved in voting about for the budget. But I still, I'm still kind of leaning toward the separate warrant article because it's such a big, I think people need to know that this is a big issue, it's a community issue, it's a new program and that people should be, you know, rallying behind it if they want to support it. I think it needs to stand out, maybe separate from the budget just for that reason.
I, I.
And I would hate for it to, if the budget didn't pass, to have that be an issue too.
I think that, though, that Forrest's point about if it's, if, if the NHIAA needs a commitment from us now, you know, we really can't wait for that, you know, that, that warrant article. So we really kind of have to make a decision around that, you know, now. So.
It sounds like we're not.
Kathy, can you speak?
Yeah, I would, I sense from you that you support the notion of a football program at New Market High School. And I'll let you make that vote. And one way or the other, the financial impact of that isn't going to be resolved until March. I think that I would ask that, and I'll work with Mrs. Brooks in the morning to talk to Mr. Corbin at NHIAA. I think he's looking for support from this board first. The financial commitment of $10,000, you've made, you seem to be making a decision, it will be a warrant article. And, and I think you should go from there. But if you don't vote to support it tonight, then it does stop. So.
But if we ask for a warrant article, we are supporting it.
Right, oh, right. Oh, that's what I mean. So I, I think that, I think that whichever way you lean, that ultimately the decision doesn't get made until March.
So we have a, a motion on the floor right now.
One other point to consider, Susan's going to have her report about budget and budget update a little bit later on in your, in your report tonight. You know how she gives you an update about where we stand with budget? So I think that will settle you a little bit relative to where we stand financially and, and knowing that we're, we're, we're right now in a very positive vein. So I don't know if that helps you any. I understand the commitment is, is a big one.
So we need to separate the motions and make a motion of support if we want to vote to support and then decide.
I would recommend that for you.
As we proceed with the meeting, whether we're going to do a warrant article or put it on the budget.
There's currently a motion on the table, Mr. Chairman.
And so if there's no further discussion.
Well, it lacks a second at this point.
No, I seconded it.
Linda seconded it, yep.
So if we've had enough discussion on that, that warrant, I mean, that warrant, that motion is to move to have the, the budget include the $10,000, if I'm not mistaken.
To approve the program and include it in the budget, that is correct.
With understanding that it is likely a two-year commitment.
I think we, I guess I'm confused because I feel like we should separate the motion that, yeah, but we can't, we have a motion.
Since that motion's on the floor, we need to.
Both the motion down, but it's got to be active on.
Okay.
You could withdraw the motion in a second. Could be withdrawn.
Yeah, I can withdraw it, I don't choose to.
Okay, so all those in favor of the motion as presented signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, I'd be willing to accept another motion if there were one.
So let's see. We need a motion to approve, move to support. Yeah. Okay. I will make a motion to move to support the creation of a, of a cooperative football team with the Epping School District.
I'll second that motion.
Okay, discussion?
Yeah, I don't understand. If, if you make a motion to place, place the football program on a warrant article, you are supporting it. So you're basically redemitting here, so why not just say?
But they need, they need right now to go to the NHIAA to let them know that we are supporting it. Our warrant article, but our warrant articles don't come out now, they come out.
But we can make a motion to apply the warrant article for the football program and that would take care of the whole situation. You don't need to go.
And we can, we could certainly make a motion on a warrant like that, but I, I don't see it, I don't see an issue with, with my motion as it is now as well.
I don't understand it.
Wait a second, the motion is stated.
I think, Jill, did you?
My battery must be going dead. Can I tell you?
So the, basically what you're trying to do is send a message to the NHIAA as well as the town of Epping that the, the school board supports football and that implicit in that is that we will have a warrant article?
Well, not necessarily.
Not necessarily.
We can talk about that after.
I think it's a totally separate motion that we have to decide how we want to fund it, but we just have to show that we support it first with this motion.
We can then after make a motion.
Chuck, you need further clarity?
Can we, after, after you make this vote here, are we going to vote on applying this program on the warrant article?
You can make a motion to that effect.
Okay, after this vote?
Mm-hmm.
Yes, yes. Because we still have to fund it.
Okay, so the current motion is, this is better than homework, isn't it?
Yeah.
The current motion, sorry, on the floor is to, to support the, I'm going to paraphrase poorly. Would you mind?
No, I can't remember what I said.
Support the creation of a cooperative.
Football team with the Epping School District.
Okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I'm going to not vote. I'm going to pass on the vote.
Opposed? And?
I'm going to oppose with, with an explanation.
Okay.
Because I, I believe that if we, as we support it philosophically, we've done it. We've done it. We can't turn around in March and say we can't do it. Either we, let's fish or cut bait, let's do it or not. Because I don't want to leave, I don't want to leave people hanging until March. We're either doing it or we're not. That, that's my, that's my opposition.
And Chuck, you abstain?
Yes.
Okay.
So the.
So the motion carries, sorry. And so I guess I'd entertain a motion regarding whether we were interested in having this as a separate warrant article to be given to the voters in March.
I'd like to make a motion to apply the football program for $10,000 as a warrant article before the vote is in New Market.
Can I ask a question? I'm just confused by your, your concerns about the budget because the budget still won't pass until March like the warrant article, so I'm confused as to where you're, you're coming from.
At any time, when, in a budget cycle, a school district can choose to remove itself from and eliminate. At any time, when, in a budget cycle, a school district can choose to remove itself from and eliminate programs. It doesn't matter whether you're committed for one year or two years. If you do not have the players, you don't have the numbers, you don't have the money, you cut a program. So, you know, what the, what's the difference between now and March? I mean, if we don't, if, if the budget doesn't pass and we've got to go to a default budget, and if we really think that football killed the budget in Newmarket in March, then we'll get rid of football. Or we'll get rid of something else. I'd like to think that the work the board has done over the last five years that I've watched it and the two years I've been involved to maintain not only a stable growth, but a stable growth, and most years under 3 percent. This year it looks like we're right around three, which is right near the, you know, the general cost of living that's been going on, the inflation index, that the voters have respected the work we have done along with the staff in our schools to create responsible budgets. And that we wouldn't turn around and put something on just to, just to inflate the budget just because it seems like today's good idea. We have, well, I sat at the table and proposed $130,000 worth of cuts to this budget that's going, that's going to the Budget Committee. And we reduced that proposed budget by $130,000. All of those things were justifiable. We could have argued for their inclusion. They weren't unreasonable requests. They just perhaps weren't right now requests. So in our stewardship of this budget, I, I just don't personally see why I would choose to take an item that if we were going to add something else, I don't know that we'd go to the, I don't know that we'd go to the, a warrant article for, again, for a program. I think we're, I think we're splitting hairs here. And philosophically, by supporting it, we're gonna come up with the money somewhere and we're not gonna do it. And if we're not gonna do it because of numbers or we're not gonna do it because of money, it doesn't matter whether we've made a two-year commitment or not. Schools pull sports teams all the time. It happens. You cancel them for participation, you cancel them for budget, you go to pay to play, you do any number of things. So I, I, I think we're making, I think we're making too much out of this issue. We're trying to turn it into an issue that will divide our town rather than oper, an opportunity to offer something that could pull our town together. You talk about that football being the big thing. Well, let's put something out there to, that we can pull people together with. Gee, let's let, let's, let's vote on it and decide if we want to get together. Well, that's not where I want to see us going.
So I've heard a motion to, thank you Forrest. I've heard a motion to to make this a warrant article for, for March. Is there a second?
And before, you know, one thing to consider too, that if we do, if, if we do put this as a warrant, as a separate warrant article and it gets voted against, you know, and we as a board still feel very strongly that it's important to offer this to the students, you know, it just puts us in an awkward position. So...
Can we think about it and approach that? Can we do this motion later in the meeting? Do we have to do it right now?
Well, it does, it hasn't been seconded, seconded yet, so...
The, I, I mean, we've, we've heard that there's, that NIH, NHIAA is proverbially waiting in the wings to hear what we have to say, and all these folks are as well. How, how long do we have? I mean, do we, certainly we've had a great amount of public input tonight, and I, and thank you all for being here. Are there, are there opinions that we would, we need to hear? I'm just kind of throwing that out there. Is, are there reasons otherwise that we haven't considered? I don't, I don't know. I don't have the answer to that.
And I, I guess we...
Can you talk again or no?
Yeah, oh yeah, no.
Please.
As Mr. Ransdale, I hope I'm pronouncing your last name correctly, he's bringing up, I think, I mean, we're really making, you know, a molehill out of a mountain. I think we're looking over the whole thing of, you know, if you all said it, well, it's gonna bring the community together. It's good for the kids. Well, that's the big bonus. It's great for the kids. A lot of these kids in town, I mean, that I see and I deal with and hang around with my kid, they're great kids. Some of them don't play sports. Why? Because what we had to offer them doesn't interest them. But football might bring them, you know, instead of just hanging out downtown or hanging out at home doing nothing, this might, you know, increase their morale or make different friends from Epping. You know, two communities bringing two communities together. And, you know, as I sit here and listen, you know, one person brings up a great proposal, some person shoots it down. It's $10,000, folks. How many people do we have and live in this town? You know, how much taxes do we all pay in this town? You know, we can come up with it somewhere. And a lot of the money that came from Seacoast Titans when I was a coach for the, for that organization, it was all privately funded. Our kids went, went out there and worked hard for, you know, donations, you know, raffle tickets, whatever the case may be. I'm sure that funding can be found somewhere. And I really think, I understand, you know, how we're gonna get the kids there, how we're gonna get them back, you know? I understand that, but that's small, that's small change right there. You know, and I think the warrant, warrant article stuff, you're wasting time for our kids. And if for some reason it doesn't happen, then I think we're all to blame as adults and the kids are, you know, thrown aside again, hoping maybe for two years or another year, they can play football. And that, I mean, we're wasting their time, in my opinion. They're great kids in this town. They might study hard. They don't have an interest in anything else. But football might, you know, pick them up to do something else. And who knows? Maybe they'll see them on, you know, Sunday Night Football one night, you know? I just think we're gonna do them a disservice if we play around with this, throwing it back and forth on, well, what about this? What about that? You know what? We'll just jump into the water with both feet and see what happens. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
I think we're just trying to decide where to get the funding from to make sure that it doesn't get voted down. Whether it's in the... I think we're just trying to decide, I'm not sure, I'm trying to imagine sitting out there and listening to what's going on because I am new on the board and all these motions and the way that everything is said and where it's placed is, is new for me too. But I think that we're just trying to decide whether we should put the $10,000 into the budget or into a warrant article because they both have to be voted on for support from the town.
Absolutely, and I understand that. But I, I can tell you, I'm not a betting man because I love, love money in my own wallet and not giving it away. But I can guarantee I'd bet on this.
Yeah.
I mean, this town's gonna support this. It's huge. I mean, I, you know, as Montagani, I think your last name's, I'm terrible with names. But, I mean, she came from Exeter. I graduated from Winnetka High School, you know, years ago. Huge high school. Football's huge. Hockey was huge over there. It's, I, I think, if you look at the huge, the big picture, it's gonna be huge for Newmarket. It really is. So, you know, I think, you know, regarding the polls and all this other we're gonna worry about, again, let's just jump in until, jump into it. This town's not gonna throw that down. This is not like trying to build, you know, something else in the town that's gonna cost us millions of dollars. You know, we're looking at $10,000. Yeah, it's a lot of money. But again, it's for the kids. It's a, it's something positive for them, not negative.
And, and just to, to make sure everyone understands as well, we've been working on the budget, you know, this, the past couple of months. And we've been working with the Budget Committee. And the Budget Committee's strong recommendation to us was to put this as a warrant article. And, you know, we try to work cooperatively with, with the other committees in the town. And when a committee feels that strongly about something like this, we, we want to take their, their thoughts into consideration. And that's why, I think why, you know, many of us are saying, okay, we definitely want this program. Now we need to decide, yeah, how, what is the best way to fund it? Is it through a warrant or is it through the budget? And that is, that's personally where I'm coming from and what, where my vote came.
I understand this and, you know, the small government, big government stuff, I try to stay out of. But what I'm trying to understand is that, you know, we, the, the people of Newmarket have a right to vote on this. But my only concern is tonight, there's gonna be something tonight that we could put on record that we're all gonna come to an agreement, yep, let's do this. Let's, let's, you know, let's do this. We'll vote on it, whether it's a warrant article or the budget in March. But if we keep, if we pass this up, it's gonna be too late.
Well, and I think that we, I think that the vote that we took tonight did do that. The vote that we already did take said, we are in support of this. So, so I think at this point, you have what you need to go to the NHIAA. You, you wouldn't have it anymore if we said, we'll fund it through a warrant article or through the budget at this point because it, we don't know what the vote's gonna be in March. So you, you won't have that, that money piece until March anyway. But right now you have the, the commitment to this board to make it part of the program, you know, either, either through warrant or through budget. So, do you know what I'm, do you know what I'm getting at?
At this point, if I were Epping, I would look elsewhere. Because Epping in my, I'm speaking for myself. I certainly can't postpone to speak for the Epping football coach or the Epping district, but they need a stable system to begin to prepare for next year. And that D5, D6 decision by NH, NHIAA is pending. Football Committee met last week. They established the divisions and they were waiting for, you know, they're awaiting, this is the final piece. Epping will move up or down.
And here's, I mean, here's the other thing. I mean, we, we were given, and we'll be going over this shortly, our budget update. And, you know, currently, right now, our projected balance at the end of the year is $271,000. Of that $271,000, we could certainly appropriate the money for this. If we want, if, if we as a board feel strongly that this is a program we want to provide to our students, I mean, we could, we could vote to do that with this money as well.
Do we have, we have a motion on the table?
We have a motion, not a second though.
There's no second.
Lack of second. Well, let me see if, let me see if I can parse this. I'd like to make a motion that we allocate $10,000 from our current anticipated surplus for the...
There's already a motion on the floor.
I, I thought it died for lack of a second.
That's right.
Yeah, I checked.
You need to, you need to...
You need to state it.
You need to state that it's...
Okay, thank you. Failing to hear a second, then that motion fails. So Forrest?
I'd like to make a motion that we appropriate $10,000 from our current anticipated surplus to set aside funding for the '08, '09 school year for football and that we place on the warrant in March of 2008, the sum of $10,000 to support it in '09, 2010, with the understanding that should that warrant fail, we will not have football in Newmarket in 2009, 2010.
Would you do that, would you do that one more time?
Would you, before you do that, is the $10,000 for two years?
Nope.
No, and that's a thing.
One, that's why the motion was to appropriate $10,000 from the current anticipated surplus.
Can, can we...
For...
To fund '08, '09.
All right.
And to place on the warrant in March, $10,000 additional dollars to fund 2009, 2010. And should that then fail in March, we have a one-year agreement.
And we understand though that the Epping District needs a two-year commitment from us, that a one-year commitment is not something that they can work with.
Again, if budgets change and things, teams are, they don't play all the time. It happens. If all of a sudden there were 18 students playing football in Epping, they wouldn't have a team either. And we wouldn't, if there were, three kids came out for soccer, we wouldn't have a team. If the budget got really tight, we could cut all of our athletic programs and eliminate athletics to save money. Then our teams wouldn't play. Those kinds of things happen all the time.
Can I just clarify something? Because I'm thinking very hard here. When we put a, a warrant, if we did a warrant article or a budget or whatever, in order to show our support for two years, it would actually not be $10,000? It would be $20,000? So we weren't even make, over the two-year period, but we have, we have to make a two-year commitment. So the, no matter what we do, it'd actually be a $20,000 commitment, not a $10,000 commitment, right? Is that true?
Well, we would be committing to $10,000 this year and then another $10,000 for the next budget year, which is '08, '09. It's, or, sorry.
You can't commit to another year. But if you went to, into a contract, then that's a different situation if they voted in.
Then, then that would essentially become part of the default budget for that following year.
Right.
I didn't get, I did not understand that. Jamie, perhaps you could help me on this. My understanding that was, is that there was a $10,000 commitment for '08, '09 for startup costs for this cooperative football team. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. The second piece to that for the second year, because there was a, a desire to have that two-year commitment, right? Based on the, the way the teams are put together and all that.
Classification, yes.
Classification. That, but we did not, there was not going to be another $10,000 because that was the startup cost. The cost for the second year would be our share of referees, coaching salaries, and any new equipment. Is that right?
And transportation. Just, yeah, just those items.
Did you equate that to another $10,000?
No.
Okay.
No. We wouldn't, we wouldn't be asked for another $10,000 for the second year. It would just be any, half of the cost that we normally pay for any of our existing teams. The items that you just mentioned.
Okay.
So if we were to appropriate $10,000 from this year's budget, we don't need a warrant article? We wouldn't need...
You're not gonna have those costs. That's not the startup cost. If you, in their presentation, it was $10,000 for startup costs. Year two was only the share of coaching salaries, referees, and our, and our, to transport our youngsters over to the high school after school, over to Epping after school.
It says balls, coaches, officials, transportation, and reconditioning of the equipment would be the cost for the second year.
Cost of the program probably goes down by about 45 percent in year two, roughly.
As the two-year commitment was explained to me by the football committee last, last week, was that if we say yes to the cooperative venture, the reason it's a two-year commitment is they put us either in five or six. So let's say Newmarket and Epping, we get, we say yes, we go for five. Then next year, according to your motion, we're not allowed to play football. Epping would still, if they wanted to play football, they would still stay in that classification five, which puts them at a huge disadvantage because they have a smaller population from which to draw players. And they might not be, might be a really bad season for them just because of sheer numbers of population. But we ha, if we decide to do this, that makes a difference in the classification. That's why the NHIAA is saying, we'll wait till your board makes that decision this next week, Mrs. Brooks, and then we have to make a decision where to classify you. And that would be for a two-year period of time. Is that clear? So I think it would leave the other community in a negative situation if we would withdraw after one year.
So now that we know that we don't need the $10,000 two years, do you want to consider amending? Because we won't need to place a warrant for the...
I will withdraw my motion and return to my original motion. That we appropriate $10,000 for football for next year.
And I will second that.
Any discussion?
Where's the money gonna come from?
Place it in the budget or we use our surplus. We could decide that as a board. My motion does not carry a source of the money at this time, just the fact that we'll find it.
And I have seconded.
So the, the motion is open for discussion. The, we can't roll, take $10,000 of this, can we, in Newmarket for next year? Can we do that?
Pay it upfront?
Yep.
Pay it upfront, pay the bill.
You, just remember, you have bottom line ability on this budget. You, you're not tied to a line item budget. You have a bottom line. And what you do and how you do that is a total school board decision. So you are in fact able to do that. I remind you that, I realize that there are a lot of things on your plate, but you also have a school board contingency fund. And that is at your sole discretion, which is $25,000. You've been using it for your school project, don't, you know, and I don't want you to. But that, that, you have some ability, you have some flexibility there.
Any further discussion? Okay, hearing none, then all those in favor, well, I, I need a clarification on the... Okay, hearing none, then. All those in favor, well, I, I need a clarification on the, on the motion, sorry. It's still early in the agenda, however, it's getting late. Been a long day. The, the motion is to earmark $10,000 from this year's budget? No, from next year's-
The motion is to approve the expenditure of $10,000 for football for the '08-'09 school year. Source at this point, undetermined. The board will make that decision at, maybe even later tonight. That leaves us open to our budget, our budget discussion, as it's normal, and it's normally occurring time.
It could, it could come from this, or we could make it a line item in the next line.
So, do either way.
Okay. Then, if there's no more discussion, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you. Thanks for coming. We'll take a, just a minute break for us to resettle.
You know, I watch these school board meetings, and I wonder why you keep having these discussions going back and forth, but now when you sit on the other side with all the little details that you have to listen to, it's, it's so serious. But over on the other side, it doesn't seem so serious, but here it does, so.
I know, everybody's getting so frustrated in the crowd and so.
So, you, your job is to relay that message, why it's so difficult?
Yeah.
Right.
Night.
Good night.
Night, Zach. Thank you for coming. He is.
And I've called a number of times. I think I even sent an email. I need to talk to him about the jerseys for the shirts.
Well, we're, we're on a few-minute break, so let me give you his, he's home tonight. Peter, if you're watching.
Peter, if you're watching, call Steve.
I'll call tomorrow. I have a bunch of kids asking where their shirts are.
Uh-oh.
For Titans, we probably raise almost $10,000 every year.
I think we should all, all go do 50/50 at the dragway.
Anybody want to buy a gold card?
We're raising money already.
Is he on hold, Chet?
Uh, we're on.
Here's our Pullman org.
That's his work, remember?
Uh, yeah, that's his work.
I'll give him a call.
I'll let him know.
All right, thanks.
See ya.
Little green started practice yet?
I know.
Yeah. Girls play their first game tomorrow night. Boys play it next Friday.
How's it look in practice?
Looking pretty good. I think the boys are going to be small, but they're going to be fast. We lost our best point guard to eligibility.
Yeah.
Did you see any Central games last year?
I did.
Remember Mike Perez?
Hmm.
He's back, oh.
He's good.
Too bad. Great kid, too.
What happened to our ones?
I know. We're empty.
I was so surprised when I opened the door, and I saw all those people here. I was like, whoa, whoa. We lost a board member.
Right, it was snowed out.
No, I mentioned to Cliff, I wasn't going to make a report on that. Hers still come to work, so it may have come in this afternoon after, and I didn't get it, yeah. They're just, they're just going to wait until January? Okay.
Okay, welcome back, those of you who are still with us. Room is not quite so full anymore, but we appreciated them while they were here. So, Sarah, do you have a student report for us?
I do have one. All right. Okay, currently, Mr. Thayer is running a canned food drive, which is actually almost over. It will end in six days on the 12th. The senior class is selling Christmas trees in the Irving parking lot now through December 23rd on Saturdays and Sundays. The National Honor Society is running a coat drive to collect coats, hats, scarves, other winter clothing, new socks, to donate. The Roots and Shoots program has begun a bottle and can recycling program at the school, which we actually didn't have before, so I think that's really positive.
Excellent.
The first high school girls' home basketball game was tonight, actually, against Franklin. They had an away game earlier this week. They didn't win, but they will also be playing at home on Tuesday, the 11th, versus Epping, and Monday, the 17th, versus Newport. The high school boys' team doesn't have a home game until January. They do have an away game, but it's not for a while, and it's in Newport. The, there's a high school dance this Friday from 7:00 to 10:00 in the cafeteria. The book fair starts in the library on Friday and will run through next week, or that's my understanding. I'm not really sure when it starts. The annual winter concert is next Thursday, the 13th, at 7:00 in the cafeteria, and also at this concert, they will be collecting canned food for the canned food drive. Also on the 13th, after school, the math team will have a meet in Raymond. There will be a junior high dance next Friday, the 14th, from 7:00 to 9:00. Progress reports will go home Monday, December 17th, and winter vacation will be the 21st, 24th through the 1st. And that's all I've got.
Okay. Thank you. We don't have a town council report, since our representative, Mr. Plasky, is not with us this evening. Mr. Ransfield, could you share an education futures committee report?
Yeah.
There's really not a whole lot.
Not a whole lot currently. Just want to let people know that are watching us at home especially, that they cornered me into doing a little TV show earlier in the week, and so you can find a, sort of an overview of the six options that are still under consideration at some level, playing periodically on Channel 13. So, that, that's out there. I, I do want to ask if we can revisit the discussion of a December 12 public hearing, whether we decided to do that or not. Chet, do you remember?
I think we-
I think we didn't, did we?
No.
Yeah, okay. So, we, there, the, the minutes from the last meeting indicate that we agreed to do one, and I don't think that was the outcome, so. Again, we are anticipating a survey as we move forward here, that you're going to be hearing something about, hopefully make, get a phone call, so.
No, I don't, is there a survey?
The, well-
I don't think there is a survey.
We did-
We did appropriate money for a survey, with the idea that we would go ahead and wait until after the holidays to do one. We did agree to go ahead and do a, a phone survey.
I thought that the, didn't you-
UNH couldn't do it now, but they could do it later, after the primary on the 8th.
After the primary.
We're waiting till after the 8th on the primary, when they'll hopefully have a little more free time.
Because of the primary, he was unable to give us any.
Right, so, as, as, just in a ti, a timeline for me, when would the survey be done, and when do we have to make our decision about what to put on the warrant articles?
We're in that process as well.
I just, I-
Simultaneously, almost.
I just, I don't know, when is our final decision about the, wasn't it January 8th?
Deposed to January 8th.
Right.
Right, so then, when is the survey being done?
It would, it would be after that.
Oh, okay.
We, yeah.
Is, is my understanding.
Okay.
So, it would be, you know, ongoing feedback, essentially.
That's fine, I think that's a good idea.
Right.
I think it still keeps your, the notion of what you're trying to do on the front burner, you know, you, even though you have a, you'll have a warrant article, you'll have written one, you'll have presented it to the budget committee, still to keep, to keep things going. And then the survey, again, it's going to be a good barometer for you to get an indicator of how the community feels.
And it's certainly the, the warrant won't, won't be redundant with the survey. The, the idea of, I mean, it would be nice if the survey would have been able to be done before then, but given the, the political situation, that's, that's not possible, but-
The national political situation.
Yeah.
I'll, I'll say statewide, because it's a, it is our, our primary, whether it's, just because it's the first, I guess it becomes the national, but regardless, I think it's an expression-
I was just looking for a clarification between that, the statewide primary and a, a local political situation, which isn't driving what we're doing.
Okay, so, yeah, look forward to those, those phone calls to replace the candidate-driven ones up until that date. Anything else on the Ed futures side?
At this time, no. Thank you.
Okay. Policy committee. Jill, welcome to your new role as policy committee representative.
I don't think so.
She, I'm not sure she's-
No?
We, we did it in her absence.
We did, I'm sorry.
You voted to have the leader. I don't think I'm doing that yet. I'd be glad to find out what I need to do to-
We can talk about that.
Be a better leader for the next meeting.
I'd like to bring this one forward.
Okay.
Because it was one that Mr. Robinson and I had worked on. It then went to the high school, so it was sort of in root while we were doing a complete overview of the policy book. But because so many of these things are on the front burner for our high school, it was important that we get this policy out to you. But this is part of your new policy book, but we pulled this one to get some, at least get this one going, because we have, as you saw in this, this is a policy on alternative credit options for our high school. It really clearly defines alternatives in terms of youngsters at the high school and the middle school garnering the credits that they are required in order to graduate from Newmarket High School. And because of some of the personalized learning plans that we have currently ongoing, the fact that we have students taking college-level courses at the university, we have students that are doing online learning. In addition, we have youngsters that are seeking early graduation. We have one particularly right now that has requested an early graduation. She has the credits to graduate. She took the fourth-year English at the university. And so, all of those things are important, so that we can move forward with these youngsters' requests, and it fits your program. So, this is a recent recommendate, recommended policy from the Department of Ed, and this is very close to the language that the New Hampshire School Boards Association recommended for your review. And it is a first read tonight, by the way.
So, as a first read, it, we won't be making any decisions. We won't be voting on this one today, but, but hopefully on our, on our next meeting.
One other point I did not make, in that this ties very nicely into the work being done at our high school by our departments. Each department is developing core competencies, and those core competencies will be used in order to evaluate whether our youngsters' alternative credit option meets the high standard and expectation at Newmarket High School. So, it all really is beginning to fit in very nicely for our students. I assume, Forrest, that you're doing some of the same things at Central?
Yeah, absolutely. It's a, those core competencies are, are driving the alternative learning and extended learning opportunities statewide.
Okay, anyone have any thoughts or comments on this policy as a first read at this point?
Kathy, are you familiar with what's happening in Exodus in regards to their alternative programs, the validity of them? Have you heard anything about it?
They have a number of them, so I'm, I'm, I'm not sure which one you're referring to.
I guess the eBay, the-
Is two charter schools right now. One is the eBay Learning Academy, if you will. That's all of their high school experience. They do on, on computers, a lot of online, very much project-oriented around technology. The second charter school that's been developed is an online. They're using the Florida online curriculum, and so youngsters can take courses, just like we do, by the way, at our virtual high school. It's the same thing. We just use a different curriculum. We use a curriculum that's out of Massachusetts, and the curriculum that they chose was the one from Florida.
What I'm concerned about is, is the, the, I'm reading about in the paper in regards to whether, whether it's legal to, for, for the taxpayers to pay for this. It's, it's been in the Exodus, Exodus newsletter, and that lawyers were looking at it, and I was wondering if this was similar to that. Well, you said that Central has it, and I imagine other high schools have it, but I was wondering, what, what's going on with this legality?
The legality, I'm, I'm not aware of.
Whether the taxpayers should be paying for this. For example, you as a superintendent shouldn't be overseeing anything that isn't-
I think that, that's an internal issue at their, in their school department. It, it has not, it, it doesn't necessarily equate to the programs and the choices of courses that students are taking, but what the impact of the SAU office has in the operation of that school. And it's a charter school, though, that was presented by the Exodus Cooperative School District. So, there's, that's why I think they're struggling with who should be overseeing in the programs. That's what that's about.
But, but it's that school board who's, who's looking at the legality part of this.
Right, it's the school board.
This is not, this is nothing like that.
No.
Oh, no, 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 no. This is so, oh, no, no. We're not running a separate school in any of our programs. This is all part of the Newmarket High School curriculum.
Maybe I can give you the example. We tend to, I'm a, I was a social studies teacher. I tend to use social studies examples. If a student, let's say a student is overloaded and decides that they can get the experience in civics by working for the town council and the town planner for X number of hours, doing X number of things. What you have to do is you take the core competencies, competencies for the civics class at Newmarket Junior/Senior High School. They present a plan for what they're going to accomplish. If they can master the core competencies in what they would learn at our junior/senior high school in this public service arena, from a work experience standpoint, for lack of a better word, students could then get their, they would, he would get their civics credit for it, as opposed to starting something else inside. It's about an alternative way to earn credits.
But, but, but what, my understanding is that the curriculum, which is set up by, by another agency, it had nothing to do with setting up with our curriculum. So, therefore, somebody like yourself as a superintendent wouldn't oversee that other curriculum, and that, that's where legality comes in. That's what I was questioning.
Right, I don't oversee any of that.
All right.
I have no jurisdiction at all, only to assure that the courses offered at Newmarket High School have rigor. That's my concern. And, and Mrs. Brook, and Mrs. Brooks is concerned, and that's one of the things that we check on.
And that if students go outside and do virtual high school or something like that, we had, that's what we had this discussion about last time with Ms. Brooks, was that those courses do meet our rigor. In fact, we had a policy discussion about what some of the wording meant, remember?
Yeah, yeah.
And that those courses do meet, A, our expectations, and B, our rigor, or we would not, student can take any course they want outside. The question is, will we grant credit for that course on a Newmarket transcript? And that's where that watchdog, you know, protection comes in, both by Ms. Brooks and the superintendent.
Well, I think that's, that's the argument, is if this is a curriculum that has been established outside of our district, and we have Mrs. Brooks and Mrs. Murphy who are overseeing this by taxpayers' funds, that's, that's what, that's where I think where that argument comes in.
Not at all. Not at all.
I'd like that clarified in terms of-
Because if a student were to transfer to Newmarket High School from a private parochial school.
Yeah.
We could choose, and I, I use this one only because it, it fits the example. We could choose or not choose to accept the religion classes offered at that parochial school.
Yeah, I agree.
Based on our, our criterion standard. That's all this is assuring that we do. It's not telling them what their curriculum has to be.
Forrest, that's not the argument.
Where the funding comes into this.
The argument is that you're talking about a different curriculum from a different source.
Well, that's-
Which is, which is a group from Massachusetts.
We have nothing to do in this school district, Mr. Jablonsky, about the curriculum from virtual high school.
Right.
I have no ownership to it. It's an, an opportunity for our children to participate in a high-level course that they can opt to take, and it's a course that perhaps our students aren't offered at our high school. that they can opt to take, and it's a course that perhaps our students aren't offered at our high school. But Mrs. Brooks and my responsibility is only to ensure that it meets the high standards of Newmarket High School. But the development, the curriculum, or anything else, we have nothing to do with it. I hope that, that puts to bed your, your concerns here. But on the other hand, we probably ought to put this on an agenda item to discuss.
Yeah. My last comment would be there's an intimation here that somehow the administrators are profiting or somehow there's financial considerations. And I, and that is, it has nothing to do with, this has nothing to do with finances. This has to do with curriculum and approval of curriculum and maintaining the rigor. So the, the question of what Exeter's doing in the finances and all that is a, is a total non sequitur issue in regards to this particular item. It's not related in any way.
Well, it, it's, I, I, I think, I think if you deal with the comparison of the two, I think it does. Okay, because it goes right back to the, the idea of the curriculum not being established and not being written by this district.
Well, I think...
Another curriculum. That's what I'm saying.
The, uh, the core competencies, which is closely tied to this policy, I think closes the loop on that, where each district is responsible for the, for the competencies that a student needs to show in order to get credit for a class. Having, taking a class external to our district is, uh, is not, I don't think, it doesn't, uh, overlap with, with this policy.
I agree with you. That's, that's why I want to argue this power, set the record straight on exactly that whole idea. That's all I'm doing, is, is to make sure that we, we're doing this correctly.
Are you interested in having a discussion at a later time about...
Absolutely, yeah. Uh, or, or we should do more research on it somehow, in terms of how, how this does fit, in regards to the legal portions of, of our curriculum.
What I'd like to do is ask you to, um, encapsulate, if you will, um, what your concern is and how, and we can, uh, put it in, in a future agenda.
Sure.
Thank you. Uh, any last thoughts on this, uh, policy as it is a first read before we move on?
Do we need a motion to move it to second read, or is that just an automatic?
That's, uh, I believe, an automatic.
Okay.
Yeah. Okay, in addition to that policy, uh, I ask that some other policies be included in, in the packet, just as a reminder to, to all of us about, um, appropriate procedures. There are, many of these policies are, are being replaced with the, uh, with the policy manual that's been, uh, receiving so much attention over the last, uh, few months. So, um, recognizing the fact that these are, in fact, being recoded or the language is changing somewhat, these are our standing policies, and you'll find when we compare to the, uh, proposed new policies that in theme, there's very little difference. So, just, the, uh, policy 131 is very short, and it's, uh, it's first in the stack here, and I just thought, um, maybe I'd read that one and just highlight the names of the others. This is, uh, "Complaints to Board Members." Generally, neither the board as a whole nor any individual members will be entertain, will entertain or consider communications or complaints from teachers, parents, or patrons until they have first been referred to the superintendent of schools. Only those cases where satisfactory adjustment cannot be made by the superintendent and his assistants shall communications and complaints be referred to the board. After hearing evidence submitted by the superintendent, in such event, the board will, if it deems advisable, grant a hearing to the parties interested. Such a hearing may be held during regular session of the board. And there's a note about grievance procedure for teachers and staff should refer to the negotiated, uh, contract with the, the teachers or policy 4200. So, that, just as a general reminder, and the other policies that are included are agenda preparation, public session and citizen participation, code of ethics, conduct for Newmarket School Board members, superintendent of schools, uh, qualifications and duties, citizen complaints against employees, and communication with the home. And I just, I would encourage, um, us all just to review these as they are, they're relevant to how we conduct our meetings and, um, and, uh, in general.
And this is very pertinent, given the, um, presentation or the, the, by, um, Mr. St. Laurent tonight. And I think we were, we, as a board, were certainly remiss in not, um, stopping that from happening at the last meeting. And I should have at the time, and should have apologized to Mr. St. Laurent at the time for having allowed that as well.
And, uh, I have already spoken my piece on that, so I won't, um, won't elaborate further. Okay, um...
Excuse me, I'm sorry.
Certainly.
I was reading these because obviously, um, going fast forward, absorbing as much as I can. But on, um, the bylaw 181...
Mm-hmm.
On number six, I, I am very detail-oriented, sometimes too detail-oriented. But I was just reading it. It said, "If individually we should be a member of the minority of any vote, we will the minority, the majority opinion." And it just didn't seem clear.
Yeah.
Yeah, there's a, there's a grammar error, I think. The missing word or something in there.
Yeah, I just, I, I just wanted to, because I wasn't sure, and since you were working so hard on...
This has been redone, so...
Oh, this is an older, okay. Oh, okay.
This is the one that's in, currently in place.
Okay.
But it has been revised.
Okay.
So we'll, I'm gonna double-check that, though, tomorrow to make sure. It should say, "We will abide" by the majority opinion.
Mr. Chairman?
Sir?
I'd like to, uh, ask for consideration a future agenda item at this point, that, uh, we as a board review in detail in a public session the code of ethics and conduct for board members, and perhaps, uh, re-adopt that because its adoption date. I think it, I think it would be a good idea for every new board that constitutes itself to adopt that so it's thoroughly vetted and thoroughly understood. Because I think in the last month, there's been several things that, uh, they weren't in the gray areas, were in violation of this code of ethics, and it may have been lack of knowledge as opposed to an overt attempt to be in violation. So, um, I think it bears an agenda item and that this board reaffirm their agreement with these code of ethics or make appropriate adjustments.
I like your suggestion. Thank you. Um, I'm, I don't know what, I, I know this has already been recoded to a different number, but, um, I would, I would like to make that, put that on the list for what we consider at our next meeting.
So...
That's a fine idea.
Would you like me to bring this one and the old, the new one? Why don't I do both? I'll put both.
Sure. It's, this is, this is supporting, kind of as we've been reviewing the whole manual.
Right, okay.
But it'll be a re- recap of that. Okay, it's, um, it's now nine o'clock. Do, I'd like the, uh, the feelings of the board, whether we should, um, consider the, uh, school district goals review tonight or do we move that to our next scheduled meeting?
So move it.
Any other thoughts?
Uh, the only thing I think is that we will be discussing them somewhat as we're addressing the warrant and budget articles anyway. Some of that is gonna come up this, I think, in the discussion anyway, so it would be fine to review it later.
They kind of interweave together.
Yeah, I think they will weave together a little bit, though, too.
That's true. So much of what we do.
Chat, Forrest, do you have a feeling? Do you want to...
I'm, I'm okay with not taking specific action on that tonight. That's fine.
Yeah, same.
Okay, great. Thank you. Um, that moves us to correspondence, if I'm not mistaken. Do we have any, uh...
None.
Okay, thanks. Um, Business Department. Sue, I saw, I have a summary of where we are year-to-date.
Yes.
And then we were deep into the project, budget prod, process.
Did everybody get one? Did everyone get one?
Yep.
Yes, I think we do. Thanks.
Do you want me to just, this is just what I would normally give to you at periodic times during the year, just to show you where I think we might be at June 30th. Again, it's December. It's hard to tell. What I've done, this is my preliminary, really. Encumbered all salaries and then used the benefit of all the balances that are in the current accounts out there. Leaving the balance that you see at the bottom. I can tell you that more, most of that balance is health insurance. We budgeted, um, early on, we budgeted 15% because we had a guaranteed maximum of around 17 or 18. It came to, down to around, um, I think, 16, and then came in at 9. So, that's a good portion of that. Probably a hundred thousand of that is health insurance savings. In addition to the negotiated agreement, we, um, had the 85% for the new hires. So there are a number of new hires that are picking up more of the costs, so that's part of that balance. We had many new hires that came in at a lot less than we had anticipated. That's part of that balance, and then some miscellaneous, um, accounts that kind of add to the whole bottom line that you have there. But it is December. Um, I'll be back to you again in January and giving you updates to see where we stand. I can tell you, we've only filled the oil tank once, two weeks ago, and it's been very cold. So we may have a need for more funds in that area, too, so, but this is what I have for you tonight. And I do have, I think we talked about this at our meeting on Saturday, the supporting documentation with this, and I can provide that to you if you'd like. I have the entire budget that shows you the pluses and minuses and where these come from, so that's for you to view if you'd like. Any questions?
I don't, uh, thank you.
Okay.
Sure.
Uh, Sue, in regards to tuition and transportation, is that SST?
No, actually, that one there, that you see, the third from the bottom, that actually was, um, special ed. When I went through the budget, they encumber their amounts, but I think there might have been an error in that, so I encumbered all of it.
Okay.
Because I didn't, I wasn't sure about those numbers, so that's what that is. That's the balance in those two accounts. It's a little early, I think, for those two to make decisions and have balances on those, so I just held them all.
Kind of assumed the, they'd be the worst.
They'd be the worst case, yes, exactly.
Okay. Any other questions regarding budget? Or the current year's budget? Okay, um, the proposed budget, we've come a long way.
Actually, let me share this with you. Actually, a couple of things to share with you. Sorry, I should have these to you before. Explain.
Oh, excuse me.
You have it.
Um, Forrest, and chat us to what happened at that meeting on Saturday with some of the change. Didn't they suggest some changes that we're gonna be talking about?
Yeah, this is what I'm giving you at this time.
Okay.
You got your pages?
So what I've given you here, first of all, is that the budget update is based on our meeting on Saturday. During the discussion, it was agreed, I believe, that we would try to bring the budget down to about 3%. And there were some jet, some suggestions that Kathleen and I went over this week. And that's what you see at the top. Basically, what I did was I took your number from the run that you had of the total budget to represent the number that it was and what we reduced it to, and explained kind of where we made those cuts to bring it down to about 3%. And I, I probably should explain them all. We know of a retirement in the elementary school. I went through the numbers and figured out the longevity and the salary, and I figured on a master's step three to replace that person, and I figure we can save a thousand dollars there. The same thing on the second line. We have another retirement at the high school that was announced, and we figure, based on the longevity, that we can save nine thousand dollars there. A little, few little miscellaneous things. Um, we took away some travel, brought it back to the level it currently is. Guidance, there were desks and chairs, I think, in, for the conference room. So Kathleen and I thought that might be a place we could hold off for another year. Painting at the SAU, um, we can wait another year for that. And then, again, given the numbers that you have for the year end, that's something we might discuss when we get closer to June. We might think about doing that then with some of those funds. Merit, um, I believe I took, actually, I think, yes, that's, um, trying to think. That's one of the accounts, either the principal's or the superintendent's account. We pulled out some of the merit, um, for that line item. Longevity, I'm trying to think. Oh, we have a retirement that you'll be seeing in the next, in the next agenda item. And that individual has longevity. We no longer have longevity in our policy, so that will be a savings. And then, um, in the maintenance account, we agreed that we would not do the entire gym floor. We would just do the normal sanding and wait a year for that, or think about another way we might fund that in one of the sections of the roof, giving us the $50,000 to bring us down to 2.93%.
The, uh, section of the roof that you speak of, that makes me nervous, that, uh, we've already identified it as being a problem.
Yeah. Um, well, I can talk to you a little bit about that. I had George in today and, and talked to him about the whole situation with the roof. I don't know if you recall, last year, we had a consultant come in. We had two consultants come in and go over the entire roof at the high school. Roofs, I would say. I didn't bring the report with me, but they did the comprehensive report of what we have, how many we have, and the conditions. And they kind of prioritized, if we were to replace them, how we might replace them. George went through and did a plan for that replacement over, I think it was a span of six years, so that we wouldn't do it all at once, so that we could kind of pace it. And in that plan, he prioritized based on what he felt was the most needed roof. Today, when we talked to him, um, the li, the library, the area over the locker rooms, those are the sections that he feels have a greater need. If you've ever been in the locker room area or in that gym area, we've had some leaks. And if we were gonna pa, we keep painting and we keep replacing ceilings, so it makes sense to fix that roof so we don't have to keep doing that. So that's why that's the priority. And I believe we left that roof in the budget. The other two sections, one was the library, and there's another, was it the cafeteria? I'm sorry, I forgot my report. Um, we can forego that, but then again, you do have your maintenance fund that you could perhaps think about making the expenditure out of there. So that's where the roof items kind of came out of that number.
The, you spoke about the library, the, I'm remembering some water damage in the library in the past year. That was from plumbing.
That was, that was a plumbing issue, yes.
That was from within.
That was a pipe burst. Yeah, that was a different situation, but... And then again, I went down through, um, on the bottom section there, just for your benefit, just to, to let you see where we kind of started at the beginning of the process. I mean, it was said that, you know, we start with a budget and how do we get to the final? I mean, the, certainly when Kathleen and I meet, we, we go through it, and by the time you get it, it's, it's a lot less than what we originally got because we've made some decisions early on. And as you can see, when the principals brought in their request, we, Kathleen and I made some decisions to take about $205,000 out of that budget. And then there's the $50,000 and, for the total. And I mean, some of those 2,000, 205,000 may have been joint decisions between the board and Kathleen and I, but, um, just to show you where we started and where we are now. Any questions? Do you understand that? Does that make sense?
I would strongly urge you to consider that third section of the roof. In, um, making that decision at the end of, as the budget year wi, you know, rolls out, come May, look at your, your current budget and see where you are, make a decision, and, and/or at that time, decide whether you want to use your maintenance fund in order to get that project done. The, the issue right now over the maintenance fund is a budget committee issue around, and maybe Linda Cliff can explain what happened on Saturday relative to the discussions around the reserve accounts. So maybe you want to jump in here.
Uh, just before we go there and we get too far from this, I'm, I'm curious how, and I don't necessarily need this now, but, um, how the, the gym floor and the roof sections break out as line items? You know, if, um, you know, what is that roof si, roof bit, half of that approximately?
Um, I wanna s... No, I think it's 20 for the roof, and the 95 is for the gym floor, because the gym floor was a, was 14, but we still need to do the refinishing, so I had to leave that in. I couldn't take the whole 14 out, so...
If I'm not, if I'm correct, the gym floor and the roof section are all part of the capital improvement plan that we have, you know, worked on to, again, as part of the stabilization process so that we're not hit with catastrophic costs. I'm, I'm very concerned. I'm very concerned about pulling things out like that because you end up being penny wise and pound foolish at times. Because you don't fix it this year, you push it back, you push it back, and all of a sudden, you've got a catastrophic problem that's gonna cost you more money to fix later than spending the maintenance money... than spending the maintenance money now. So, I think that, uh, well, I underst, I, I certainly understand what the superintendent's recommendation is. I'm in a similar position. I'm just not sure that I want to wait until May to make a determination about whether we, we do this roof or not, because I think that, uh, if it's in our capital improvement plan and we have the wherewithal to get it done without asking for additional taxpayer funds, it's sort of like when I run my home budget. Something comes up, I was planning to do it next month, but you know what? I'm probably better off if I do it now, and I've got the money, I'm probably gonna do it now, because it's gonna cost me more two months from now. I just, I'm very nervous about capital improvement projects and, and putting them off, because they end up becoming catastrophic expenses.
What would the percentage be if we did put it back in?
I'd have to look, because I think it's only twenty thousand for that particular section.
It was only twenty.
But, keep in mind, some of the items that you talked about at your previous meetings were deferred to that maintenance trust fund. And the discussion that you had on Saturday was to not do that. So, you have to make a decision, do you want to go ahead and do that? Or do you want to add those back in the budget, or how do you want to handle that? And that's why I provided you with the information on the trust funds, just to show you where you, where you made decisions last year. The thirty-nine-nine on the maintenance trust funds. Right now, that's what you talked about. It hasn't been withdrawn from that account, because obviously, some of those haven't, most of them have been completed. And what I'll do is I'll come to you with the total amounts, because you kind of give me an amount up to and including. And what I would do is find out the total amounts and then ask for the approval to withdraw it from that trust fund, if you desire to do that. You're not under any obligation to do that from last year, because as I said, it hasn't happened. But I guess what I'm suggesting is, given what I gave you on this year's budget, that might be a thought to do that instead of using that trust fund, based on the conversation we had with the budget committee. And leaving that trust fund intact for your roof. You follow that, what I'm saying?
Well, first of all, um, Chet and Forrest weren't at the, um, budget committee meeting on Saturday, so just to fill you in, um, Leo Fillion, who was, um, a member of the budget committee um, during, on the, the year that, um, the budget committee made the recommendation under, uh, Bob Coffey was the chair at the time. Um, they recommended to us that we set up these, um, reserve accounts. In Leo's, um, recollection and strong opinion was that these reserve accounts were really supposed to be for emergency, um, y, you know, emergency repairs and things like that. And that his, and he was concerned that, that, you know, we, we have a, um, capital, a CIP plan in place, and, and we're supposed to be, you know, we're planning to make these repairs, and he feels strongly that it really should be part of the budget and not taken out of these accounts that he felt were really set, um, as an emergency, um, for emergencies. And, um, you know, a, and, you know, although I think that, um, one of the, you know, one of the benefits that we certainly, um, have and, um, presented to voters when we were setting up these reserve accounts is that, you know, it is a way for us to plan for that emergency, um, down the road. I, you know, I, I don't think any of us felt that it was necessarily the only time that we were gonna use those, uh, reserve accounts as in, in emergency situations. But, um, as I said, Leo felt pretty strongly that that's what, he said that that was his understanding as a, as a budget committee member and why he, um, approved it personally, approved of it personally. And he felt that that was probably, he felt that that's, was the rest of the budget committee's understanding as well, but, um... So, so, the discussion has been, do we want to, the, the, it was like, what, fifty-three thousand, I think, at our, um, at our Saturday meeting when we, you know, when we decided, let's take these repairs out of the budget and put them, and spend them from the reserve account. You know, it was, it was discussed at our, um, at the meeting on Saturday that we would, that we would discuss whether or not we wanted to put that back into the budget. And is that, that's that fifty?
No, that's not that fifty thousand. That, that actually is part of that two hundred and five that I talked about earlier that you made during the course of the whole process.
Right, yep.
I know twenty-five and twenty-five was just a general to take out of both of those, um, maintenance accounts in both schools, so that was at least fifty.
Okay, oh, right, right.
Right, do you recall that? I believe the lockers, again, were pulled out, the four thousand, so you're at fifty-four. I meant, sorry, I meant to make a list of those.
The, the, um, the counter. Dust, I think, the dust collector.
The dust collector, right.
And lowering the, um-
The counters.
The counter, to make the wheelchair accessible.
Right, those were the items.
But those were a part of that twenty-five, I think, wasn't that part of that, some of those?
Yeah.
No.
The four was separate, but then the twenty-five would have included a couple of those items, I think.
Yeah, I think that it was, yeah, twenty-five for each school and the, um, dust collector. I think is what we decided for four thousand, is what we decided, um, to take out of the reserve accounts and then the rest of it, keep in the budget.
And it looks like you actually did take the lockers out the year before. Of that reserve. Oh, that's what-
That's oh seven oh eight, that's this year.
This year, that was, right. It hasn't officially been done yet, but that was the intent.
The intent of the, um, reserve accounts, when they were originally drawn up by the budget committee three or four years ago, was twofold, as Linda described. One was for emergency purposes, in case we had a, a, a situation that occurred that required some attention. But the second one was also to stabilize the taxes in that when you had projects, you would be able to use that money and that, that would enable you to keep a stable tax rate and increases at, at reasonable levels. And as you know, that's what you've accomplished by a mixed use, if you will, of your budget and your reserve accounts. So, the decisions are really yours to make, but, um, I did a, I did, uh, ask the member of the budget committee to contact Mr. Coffey so that they could get a further clarification, but clearly, that was Bob's intent.
If I, I remember last year's budget discussions, Mr. Coffey was a member of the budget committee-
Yes, he was.
Last year, and we had, we had this discussion in his presence. And I don't recollect any mention or discussion that, you know, these were intended for emergencies only. I, I personally have a, have a problem withholding the taxpayers' money and then asking for more, which is in effect what, you know, if we don't have some prudent use of our, of our savings and our qu, the quality of our fiscal management, uh, that's what we're doing. We're gonna hold a reserve account with a hundred and fifty thousand dollars in it, and we're gonna go out and ask the taxpayer for a hundred thousand that we could reasonably pay for from here. And in reality, we've now asked the taxpayer for two hundred thousand when we only needed a hundred. And I think that, uh, and that's why we've appro, I've approached it with the philosophy that we're never gonna draw those accounts down below a certain amount, because we do want to make sure we've got our emergency money there. But I don't want to double dip the taxpayer, and I feel that's what we do if we don't have a prudent use of these accounts.
I think that's well said, and if you look at the, um, we have a copy, a draft copy of, uh, of the warrant included in the packet, which includes the language that was, I think, used since the inception of these, um, these warrant articles. Clearly, they don't indicate, um, explicitly, I don't know. There's, there's certainly legal, um, lines you need to paint between when you're writing warrant articles, I understand. And I suppose if you say emergency, you know, whose emergency?
These have been written this way, sent for the last five years. I mean, I, there, there's no, uh, change in the verbiage here. We've been modeling it. Obviously, it makes sense, because it's been checked by legal, our legal counsel and the, uh, revenue administration, so we know that these are correctly written, so we haven't changed them.
So, thinking about the, the voter downstairs, um, you know, voting to, to, to authorize these, um, uh, in the event, you know, in, in the past, clearly, it does, it's, it doesn't say, um, to be used only when there's no other monies available or, or anything to, or emergency, or anything to that effect. So, I'm, I'm, my reading, as, you know, as also a voter and taxpayer, is, is that, um, that this is money that we already have. And, and as long as, and as, as you said, Forrest, very well, if the money is available and, um, we have enough, I guess that the question is, do we have enough in that account to take care of us if we have a situation where we have a catastrophic boiler problem or, um, in, or what have you? You know, we talked, maybe, was it the last meeting or the meeting before about caps and, and minimums?
So, that's a question really with no answer, though.
Right.
Because you don't know, I mean, you could have two hundred thousand in an account and need five hundred thousand if something goes wrong. You just never know, but, uh, and if that's the case, then that's the case.
That was something that I think you talked about on Saturday, the caps, that came up too.
Yeah.
We've, we've discussed capping these funds for the last two years I've been here and thinking that it's appropriate to do so.
Yeah. And they are, and, and the budget committee was, um, strongly recommended that we do so. So, um...
Jill or, or Chet, do you have any thoughts on, uh, on what we do with, uh, those expenses?
Yeah, I'm not too happy with the, um, I'm, I'm with Forrest in regards to the, uh, the roof over the gym. I'm a little concerned about that. I wonder if that could be something that I think we should, uh, agree on in, in getting worked on. Put this back into the budget. I, I kind of hate to see, see a roof we can end up destroying, something else. Roofs are roofs. I think they should be, they should be taken care of.
And, and, and the thing is, I mean, yeah, it, we could, if we took it off this, you know, if we had a fund balance, we could, you know, but maybe we won't have the funds, you know, we don't, you know.
Business that way.
I think the voters would be sympathetic to us in regards to fixing roofs.
Yes, definitely.
So, the question is, adding that twenty thousand back in, what will that do to that two point nine three percent? Because, um, again, the strong sentiment from the budget committee was that we keep us, keep ourselves at three.
But if I understand correctly, that two point nine three percent does not reflect the other items that were not pulled out, because we were, we were gonna move them into a capital reserve fund. Am I correct about that? There's an additional fifty thousand dollar reduction that wasn't moved over?
No, it was moved.
Oh, that's moved over.
No, it wasn't.
It's in there, okay, okay.
That's in there. Three point one, if you add twenty.
Three point one.
Three point oh eight. I can look for some other area to bring it right down to three, you know, a little.
It's pretty close.
It's close.
Sue, what was the recommendations of the people who looked at the roof of the gym? Did they say that it should be repaired or should be replaced or?
Well, basically, what they did, and it's a huge report, if you want to read it, is that, I mean, looking at the entire, all of the roofs, and I can't remember how many there are there.
I'd say there's like thirteen or-
Thirteen or twelve, I mean, that's the most critical area we should concentrate on. But the other roofs do have a need, because I think the young, the one that's twenty years is probably the last time we replaced a roof, so.
If we keep pushing this back for next year, what are you gonna do with the others?
Right.
Right, that's true.
I think we should at least do this one.
I mean, and this is, this particular year, um, I think in future years, the plan was up to a hundred and seventy-five thousand a year to get within that schedule, that five or six year schedule that we had planned out. So, this is the, probably the lightest year on fixing roofs.
It sounds like, though, that we should get started.
I, I agree.
And I think it's part of the reason we kind of deferred it is because knowing that we might be in a different building or something, we were kind of holding, but I don't think we can hold any longer. I think we need to do something.
So, the, the reserve fund, um, balances that you gave us, we have eighty-four thousand right now.
Well, keep in mind, though, I'm saying that the thirty-nine-nine isn't thirty-nine-nine. It'd probably be a little less, so, roughly. You know, because when I, when you authorize up to, it may not in fact be the total, and I haven't gotten the final figures, and I'll come to you with that, but roughly eighty-four.
Okay, so we have roughly eighty-four thousand. We're recommending that we take fifty-four thousand, which brings us to thirty-four. I mean, are we, we're not, uh, uh, I'm, I don't think that then saying, well, maybe we move this twenty for the roof over there too is leaving an awfully small balance in that account for, if, you know, we do have to do something major.
Can we put it as a line item?
Yeah, we can just leave it in your budget.
All right, leave it in the budget.
Leave it in the budget.
Put it, leave it in a budget and describe it as a line thing. Do we need this, uh?
Well, we don't, you don't need to do that, though, Chet. Remember, you don't have a line item budget, you have a bottom line budget. So, you can make those decisions.
But the expectation is that we, we'd use that money for that purpose.
Mm-hmm.
Oh, yeah.
You know, as, as far as, you know, seeing in the future is always tricky. Okay, so is it, what is our consensus on, is, is our consensus on the use of the capital reserve for, you know, as the budget is currently presented, where those items that we discussed, the countertop in the junior, senior high school?
I think it was just twenty-five for the elementary, twenty-five for junior, senior high school, and then the four for the dust collector.
No, it was also the counter and the dust collector.
I thought we decided that that was just going to go and, it'd be part of that twenty-five that we allocated to each.
That's what I thought. I thought there was four thousand for lockers too, though. Was the, were the lockers included?
Oh, yeah, I, I don't know what the-
That's the four, I'm thinking.
In front of me to see the notes, but I thought we wrote it all down that day. I know I did, but see my notes.
We have, I, I don't, but you, when you made that decision, that was what I got from the list. Twenty-five out of, it's the elementary, twenty-five out of the high school, and I think part of that was the countertop and, um, and then-
Correct, because we had discussed them separately, but we ended up putting it together.
Just taking a total and, yeah.
So, given the concerns of the budget committee and our discussion now, do we, do we want to keep it the way we have it? I guess is the question.
That's the question, yeah.
Can I ask one more question before we make that decision? Someone had mentioned that we would be, this was just something that came up, and I just wanted to, to bring it up again, but that we might be losing twenty in the population of the high school and that we could hold off on the lockers for a year, although, and I don't know if they started, I mean, that was just another option, that they hadn't done the lockers, that we could hold off another year on the lockers. I'm not saying that I want to or I don't want to, I'm just saying that was something that came up, that that four thousand could be held off, or we could consider putting it back.
Well, you know, I don't know where they get twenty, because right now, we have eighty-six, uh, fifth graders, and we're gonna currently have ninety-six twelfth graders, so now we're ten. So, I'm not sure where this twenty comes from. We also picked up, um, uh, more students at both schools, so we picked up additional, um, kids at the elementary school. For, we picked up eleven more kids in the district this month, eleven youngsters.
It's huge, we picked up twenty at Central this month. It's been really strange.
I, I worry about that, that twenty, tho, those kinds of tight numbers.
The numbers that you can't control.
I mean, we are, if they said twenty last week, we picked up eleven this month.
And you can always make that decision later, because again, it's the trust fund and your agents of that trust fund to make that decision at any time. It doesn't have to be made at budget time.
Oh, I see what you're saying.
So, if you choose to keep it out of your regular budget.
So, as they spend their twenty-five thousand dollars, we can say, yea, 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 nay to it as it's, they're spending it?
Right, well, or you can say now, you don't want to do the lockers, but if we come back to you, say, in August and say, you know what, we picked up thirty more students, we need those lockers, will you give us the permission to withdraw from the trust fund? Because that is, you are the agents of that fund. And it's not necessarily a budget decision, you need to make it budget time. You have the ability to make that decision at any time.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for explaining that. Does that make sense?
Let me go at this another way. You need a roof on your house and you had the money in the bank. Would you pay cash for it, or would you put it on a credit card?
Cash. It was credit cash.
Well, that, that's my point.
Right.
I mean, to pretend I made a suggestion when we began this, that we look at using potential current surpluses and see if we can accomplish this, this year's money. And I think that, again, I'm, I'm in that same vein. Why ask for it twice? I mean, depending where our, you know, where our projected surpluses are, through, I mean, they do a great job, they keep us in the black. And I'd rather have a little too much than going back and asking for a supplemental appropriation somewhere, so... But through that prudency, we are, I mean, we may, maybe, do, do we have a problem here? I mean- I mean, I put it back in the budget, I feel like I've got the money in the bank and I'm going to use a credit card to pay for it. And then I'm going to, I'm going to pay the interest on the credit card to boot.
Right, and I think we're all, oh, well, maybe we didn't all agree that we should put it back in the budget. I mean, keep it in the reserve. I thought we did.
Maybe we could be clearer as to why we're choosing to use the reserve in this way, so that we can feel comfortable when we make our decision, if we're all leaning towards keeping it in the reserve, just be clear and be on the same page as to why we're deciding this, that maybe we see these funds not just to be used as emergency, but also to stabilize the tax rate and to make sure that things are getting done that need to get done without, as you said before, using more tax, asking for more money when we already have it there.
When you say we need to be clear, you mean with the Budget Committee?
With the public hearing?
I think just right now, saying it clearly so that it's clear to why we're making the decision, and that way it's not in question by anyone, like we're all, I don't know how to say it clearly, I guess. Is that, am I being a little confusing?
No.
I just?
I just want to, I just kind of?
My question is, why are the lockers okay coming out of the reserve and why not something else? Like, how are we making that decision as to what?
What's your criteria?
Criteria?
You have, because of prudent allocations and prudent spending, you have the money. You have the money to do these things that need to be done, so just know that. Susan just gave you a report that indicates to you that you are in the black and that you have money to be able to address these issues. Now, you don't want to do it today because it's a little early. I mean, we're fifty percent through the budget, the budget season. But when you're ready to do this project, which is next summer, you'll have an excellent idea where you stand. So you have the option of using your budget money from this year, or if you find yourself, we had a catastrophic situation this year, we couldn't spend, you don't have any money left, you still have your reserve account to be able to do that. You have a fallback position, which is really a great way without double dipping into the taxpayer.
I think, I think it bothers me when you look at the repairs and maintenance reserve fund, where it would deplete it to a point where, you know, Sue, what do you think your projections would be to put more money back into this for next year?
Well, based on what I told you tonight, if that ends up being what it is, you'll have, fund them all.
Okay, so we should go ahead and just take the money on, off this reserve fund for the roof?
Well, I'm?
If we leave the money in the reserve fund, not in the budget, we can, as we're agents of the fund, we can, and we're agents of our own budget, on the bottom line basis, at the end of the year, we can come the first of June, we'll have, I mean, I feel very confident that you're going to come really close to that number now, just because I've seen it year to year, how close you watch it. We'll see that at that point in time, we'll have the money then in this year's budget, and maybe we can do those things, leave the money in the capital reserve account.
Right, right.
And then it will stay there for future use.
Right.
Okay.
That's kind of where I think we should go at this point. The other thing is too, you did leave a section of the roof in there, you could use that with your reserve funds and then put back the other items in the regular budget. I think it was twenty-eight thousand.
Did we leave a more critical section of the roof in there?
And you could definitely decide you want to do that, and it's going to come out of the reserve funds because that's an emergency situation and that's kind of fits with the whole, and then bring back the other. So you have some play there.
Flexibility.
Flexibility, and you need that, you need that with a building.
Thanks to the Budget Committee, Bob Coffey and company, and when they set these funds up, that gives us the ability to have this discussion now, so it's really, it was a grand idea.
So, then we could, so, for some reason, like fifty-four thousand is sticking in my head.
It is fifty-four.
And I think it is fifty-four, I'm quite sure it is.
I don't have that in front of me.
We've slated fifty-four thousand to come out of the existing eighty-four.
Okay.
So which will leave us thirty-four for an emergency, however, we also, that's not accounting for any allocated surplus that will re-enter that account at the end of the year. So if this figure holds, if the current surplus holds solid, we would remove twenty-nine thousand from this current surplus and we would lose a fraction into each of these reserves, but not a significant amount. We would still be maintaining and in fact building our reserve accounts to, and I think it's probably a nice, maybe an item for an agenda where we actually do something about those caps on those counts, get that done.
Forrest, did you, you said twenty-nine, did you still want to do the gym floor?
You know, yeah, Chat, I think so, because it's one of those, again, I go back to, because I'm nervous about putting off capital things that all of a sudden, you don't do that gym floor and you wait another year, and then it's easy to wait, and then all of a sudden, now it's got bows and tracks and things in it that are going to cost us even more to fix. I mean, when it's time, it's time.
Well, I don't think, bless you, I think we're going to do the refinishing, like we always do, but this was a more thorough refinishing with the painting and, you know.
If we do, if we wait on the thorough refinishing, basketball courts take wear, there's tracks that get run in, the basketball runs a certain way, so you want to do that major rework periodically to keep your underlying surfaces tip-top shape. So I hesitate to put something like that off.
Looking though at that floor, I just, I kid you not, this past weekend, I was sitting, you know, I've been thinking about that very item, and sitting there, you know, waiting for my son's practice to be over, the gentleman sitting next to me said, wow, these floors look really good, out of nowhere. They, they really, I mean, they look nice. It's, there's, I mean, because I think we do the annual finish that we do, they've been really well maintained. I'm not saying we don't ever need to do it, but I don't think that if we do it this year or three years from now, it's going to be a significant difference in the longevity of the floor.
I don't know the answer to that, maybe it won't be, maybe it will be, I mean, there's a, it's the structural underlayings that I'm, the wood itself, because when you do the complete refurbishment, you're taking it down to bare wood and starting from scratch.
We don't have to make that decision today on the gym floor, at least we know the roof is going to be done. The gym floor can hold off, maybe we can add that on as we look at the reserve fund as it grows.
I'm okay with both, potentially paying for them with the reserve account.
Leaving them both in the budget, no, taking them out of the budget, so taking this twenty-nine-five out of the budget as recommended, and then at the end of the year, saying we can, if we have, if we have a surplus, we use it, we use the surplus. If we don't, maybe we have to take, if we only have thirty-four, we take that twenty-nine?
And do the roof and don't do the floor at that point, it gives us the flexibility to do those things, right Chat?
I've been in the discussion of the particulars at that time.
Because at the end of the day, my strong goal is to meet that three percent that the Budget Committee has asked and that we would like to see as well. And if we, and if these recommendations that you may bring us down to two point nine-three, I'd really like to keep those recommendations, because it hits the Budget Committee's criteria of the three percent and our desire to keep it at three percent. So, so if, you know, so if you guys are good with that?
I like the two point nine-three, I want to be under three, I want to be lower than that. But part of that, but, no, 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 let me finish that. But we have to remember that part of that two point nine-three is being driven by voter-approved contractual increases.
Right, which is for, and when you consider, we brought this up Saturday, when you consider that payroll expenses are seventy-six percent of our total budget, and right now, we know contractually that we have to give a four percent increase next year, and our budget is still at a two point nine-three percent increase.
Our operating budget is some increase, is some fraction of that two point nine-three, that's my point. So I can live with the two point nine-three, understanding that a fairly significant chunk of it is the voter-approved teacher contract. The voters told us that that part of the budget has to be supported, we've made decisions about the rest of it and tried to be very frugal.
I can't wait to see what the default budget looks like, because it's going to be very close, I think.
It will be, it will be, and if you want me to go with this number, I can run that for you next meeting. Once I get a final number, then I'll go through and come up with the default.
I don't want to make you do it a million times, because it's got to be arduous.
No, it's not, no, it's not.
But I'd love to see it.
I will, I can run it on those numbers.
So you agree on this, what we gave you tonight, we'll take this and then we'll create the default budget?
I'm sorry to throw a wrench in things.
That's okay.
I agree with the direction we're going, I like all the discussion, but we did spend an hour and a half tonight talking about the football program, is that supposed to be talked about here too?
No, that's next.
Before we say that this is the final number, because we have to decide if that's going to go in here too, right?
Right, yes.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure.
I was hoping somebody was going to bring that up.
I was hoping I got it last in there, okay.
Boy, you're fast on the trigger, good for you, good for you.
Okay, so we've got direction, is everybody's okay with this? We'll get you the numbers, we'll have them ready for the twentieth and?
We don't have to make any motions?
No, I don't think so, I think once we do this, we're going to bring back a final number for your budget and a final number for your default budget, and then I would hope that you would vote on both of those.
And I'll do my little sheet that I usually do.
I just want to make sure we have the number exact now, that we have the direction you want us to take.
Thank you for putting all the numbers together.
Susan worked hard on this.
So as far as the football program goes, if we, at the end of the year, do have that surplus, we can use surplus to pay that in advance. If we don't, then, then we will need to, if we, if we, if you make these changes to the budget and we keep the increase at this two point nine-three percent, then it will be our responsibility to find that ten thousand dollars within next year's budget. We'll have to cut, we'll have to cut the plans for a line item by ten thousand dollars to allow for that expenditure.
Now, the surplus you're talking about, football, would be the fund balance?
Right, yes.
So we would, how would, from these reserves here, within?
No, not from those.
Okay, when there's a surplus, when there's a surplus, doesn't the entire surplus have to go into the reserves? So do we have the okay, we can spend the surplus other than putting it in the reserves? Okay, I didn't know that.
That would be the fund balance.
Within the current year though.
Only within the current year.
Within the current year.
So we would have to pre?
Right, you have to make those decisions before June thirtieth.
And then whatever was left over would be what we put into the reserves.
At the end of the year, knowing the end of the fund balance at the end of the year, when there's particular projects that really need attention, let me give you an example, last year, we wanted to upgrade the lighting in the gym, the music room, to go to energy star efficiency in lighting and better lighting, quite frankly, there was money at the end of the year in the budget. We used that to do that project over the summer. The board authorized us to expend that money, of course, it's payback, because we're going to, you know, do it with electrical use, but they did expend seven thousand dollars, well, whatever. We expended an X amount of dollars to do that project out of the fund balance, the remainder, before we divvied up the money to go into those reserve accounts. It's kind of, again, it's because you have bottom line authority on your budget.
I think I'd take a bit of a different tack on the football, in that we've made a commitment to that program with a board vote tonight to support it, and we've made a commitment to that program with a board vote tonight to support it. I don't feel comfortable putting the funding in a what-if limbo at this point, where again, if we, I don't want to have to go find ten thousand next year and eliminate something else, it shouldn't be that kind of competition. We've made a commitment as a board tonight to do this, I say we fund it tonight, and I make a motion to allocate ten thousand dollars from the existing anticipated surplus, or fund balance, excuse me to use the proper term, thank you Chat.
Well, you're making a motion, you said, the problem is, we won't know?
Well, that's why I said anticipated, there's no guarantee, we may have to come back and visit it again, but I mean, I mean, it's the same way we paid for the lighting, you know, you don't know June thirtieth what the actual numbers are anyway, you anticipate.
So what you're saying is the, when we come to that point where we're close to year end, the first ten thousand dollars that we have quote "left over," would go to football?
We need to account, yeah, I think that's a good way to put it. We go ahead and encumber ten thousand dollars, basically.
I'll second that.
Any discussion?
Yeah, I, I'm not against football, I just think that when I proposed having this in a war and article and when I voted negatively about the program itself was because I thought the voters should have a say in this, and I think that that would not only establish it in the long term, but it would bring the community together, you know, closer. And that's the reason why I did that, and I still hold, I still hold to that, so however I vote, that's the reason why I'm voting. I'm not, it's not against football. It's basically where I think that the voters should, shouldn't make that decision. And I know we can, you know, I know we can do that, but that's my feeling.
Jill, any thoughts?
I think he makes a good point, and I also think, I'm thinking. It's a hard decision, because I do understand the point of involving the community in a decision that's going to affect the community, and by the process we're talking about, we're actually making the decision for what we think is in the best interest of the students.
But in our reality?
Hoping that the community is going to support the decision that we're making.
In reality, we have made that decision already. The decision is made. We need to make a decision about funding.
Where the money's coming from.
I'm trying to stay with my philosophy of not asking the taxpayers for additional dollars.
And I don't, and I don't have an issue with that, only that, you know, we don't know what our surplus is going to be. I mean, yeah, I'm certain, I'm fairly certain that we will have it, but you never, you never know, I guess is my memorial report.
And this, this is, will then be a commitment though for, well, again, the, I'm forgetting, so maybe others are too, the ten thousand dollars is startup money, it's not something that we need to provide annually.
Right, that's right.
It would be around, what, five fifty-five, six dollars, oh, I know, you can't say.
I'm estimating that yearly support for this program would be between six thousand and sixty-five hundred dollars after that. Sixty-five percent of our startups, looking at the numbers we were providing in the budget. I would imagine that bang for our buck, if we compare our other sports programs, we spend more for any, almost any individual sports program than we would for that, and they were taking advantage of an economy of scale by combining with another school district to offer our students something that, you know, one of the, one of the negatives that we hear is that New Market doesn't offer things to kids. Well, I disagree with that, because I see what happens at the high school and I know the clubs and the activities are there, but if we have a reasonable way to offer something additional that has student interest, because I'll be honest with you, I was surprised volleyball, because that's a cheaper, that's a cheaper thing to offer, and I would have imagined there would be more interest than there apparently is, as an example. I'm surprised the football interest is there, but it does seem to be. And it's a, it's a cost-effective method to go at it.
Also, when I was getting involved in the Futures Committee, I was talking to people about the school and how they felt about it in the community, and I had, and I was actually very surprised, but I had three to four people in one weekend saying that they were considering moving to a different town because there was no football program offered in the town of New Market, and I was surprised because I hadn't even thought how important that football was to a community until I heard that. And then I found out about what was going on with that thing, so.
Sarah, I'm curious, has there been any discussion at school about this? Has, is it known that this was?
I haven't personally had a lot of discussion about that, about this, probably because most of the people I would talk to would be seniors who wouldn't have been involved with this because they wouldn't be able to participate in it. But having a brother who's interested in it and knowing his friends that are interested in it and knowing that, I think that, if you're asking if I think that this would have a lot of kids that would participate in it, I definitely do think that, and I also know that there are kids that have gone to other schools that I know, that I know of that have gone to other schools because there's no? that I know of that have gone to other schools because there's no football in Newmarket.
And also, the girls could compete in the field goal kicking.
That's, that's right.
Epping had a female kicker this year, one of their, one of their soccer players, absolutely.
They have them in Massachusetts.
She was good, too.
Massachusetts.
That's right.
There's also a lot of residual.
I'm not against.
Activity with, that comes with the football. You know, I mean, they talked about cheerleading. And, and that, and he said that the, that their coach had already asked about it. You know, so there's some other opportunities, you know, I think they'd have to get permission, NHIAA permission for that as well, but, you know, I mean, there's.
That's because they compete also.
You'd have to get permission to, for a mixed team in the competition. You might not have, not have to get permission for a mixed team to exist.
Yeah, that's true.
Because the, there's only, there are two competitions a year.
Yeah, yeah.
That's right.
Also, there isn't a lot of interest in cheerleading, well, there aren't a lot of cheerleaders now for the basketball program, but I feel like if there was a football team, there would be a lot more girls that would be interested in cheerleading, because there are a lot of girls in my school who are interested in football and would wanna be a part of it. That's what I think, I'm not really sure.
That's a financial question. Would we have to put the second year's expenses into this budget that we're working on?
No.
We'd talk about it next year.
Oh, because it's not for next year?
Yeah.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Nine, ten.
Okay. So let's make a motion here.
Well, there's a motion on the floor, I believe.
I think it was seconded, too. I think I heard at that time.
And then there was a long choir pause as we all thought.
Was it, Penny? Seconded by Linda, right?
The motion was to allocate $10,000 from the anticipated year-end fund balance to be earmarked, as Cliff said, the first $10,000 to support the football program that we approved tonight.
So there's the motion as presented. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries.
Opposition is not against football.
Absolutely, understood.
Yeah, you stated that well, and thank you for that. Okay. So. Are we done with budget discussions, then?
I'll bring back the revision.
Can I say something? The fact that we were making over two hours of discussion over, over $10,000 decision shows to me how important it is for every expenditure that this committee makes and how important the budget is and, and all of the expenses that we, I mean, we put a lot of time into this discussion to make sure that we thought it through and, and, and made a decision that we were okay with. So I just, I think it attests to the fact that we are paying attention to every dollar and where it's going, and that's why the percentage on the budget is at 2.93%.
Thank you, well said. Okay, the preliminary review of the warrant articles.
I would only ask that you okay the concepts, all right? We'll plug in the money, we haven't even done that yet. You can see that, we're gonna have money for all of them, but if I could just quickly walk through these and make sure that they represent what you want, I will continue to work on them over the next couple of weeks. The first one would be, um, and you have to make a decision about this, and you tell me yea or nay, I'm throwing everything out on the table, all right? First one was on architect and engineering fees associated with the expansion of a school facility. You've had that on the last couple of years. Are you there? Are you, do you wanna, do you wanna table that one, think about it some more, bring it back again? I mean, I can put numbers in there, I do have preliminary numbers I received from Dan Beeson, our year engineer. Or are you thinking a different way?
Without the, the, the feedback from the phone survey, I'm not sure the phone survey's gonna be the answer to, to all questions, but I, I'm concerned that if we put that in there prior to having a clear direction already from the community, what we're gonna do, I feel we, we will appear to have the cart before the horse. It's just my opinion.
I have an opinion, I have a question, I guess. And as far as, since we are waiting to decide what we will be doing about the facilities as far as, I have assumed, getting the survey and getting more information, at the same time, how, how does this decision here affect what happens with the timeline of, I know I don't, we don't know what's going to happen, but just, for example, just say that there is an interest in expanding to a new facility. Would getting this sum of money passed this year, I don't know how to say, is it going to hold us back a whole nother year because these fees aren't done and this work isn't done?
This will allow you, if you have put a bond next year on the, on the ballot. Say you put a bond on your warrant article for next year. This would have an exact number, it would have all of your due diligence, your fees, everything done, so that when you went out, you'd even know how much the building costs because you would have gone out and got, received bids and everything. So this allows you all that upfront. So the difference between that is probably a delay of about six months. So if you say, okay, we're not gonna do this, we're gonna tie the A and E fees with the expansion of the school facility, it will probably delay you about six months. Forrest, you did that at Portsmouth, I've done it at other schools, and it's about six months.
It's about six months, and it was, and Dan's projections were six months when we compared the two last year. So, I, I do agree with Cliff, I think that it's, at this point, cart before the horse on Article One.
So you're saying let's, we're gonna drop it.
Chet, do you have a feeling on that?
I agree, I think we should.
Article, whoops.
I'm just making noise and slowing us down.
Article Two is purpose of purchasing land. And as you know, and I hope that we could talk about this in non-public briefly tonight, but there are two pieces of property that are available to us. And where we need, you need to enter into some negotiations and decide, are you gonna go forward with this or not? So, I don't know, do you wanna leave this on here so that you can continue to deliberate this issue?
Yeah, I think we should, because not, not only, it, it's not just, buying land is not just tied to building a facility. It is, we need land for, for fields, we, you know, I mean, there could be, there's many uses for land, and there's, there's many things we can do with a piece of land, and it's not just building a facility. And I think everyone, the, the overwhelming feedback that, that I think we all get is, you know what, get, if you can get land, get it, so.
And it, I mean, if we get land, we get it, and we'll have it to, for the community to have, we'll have further opportunity to make decisions on how we, what we do with it. It doesn't, it doesn't, it's not a, it starts the ball rolling, certainly. It gives us the potential of place to roll the ball, I suppose. But it, it's not an eventuality, then, that definitely that, that's the final, the final thing. It's also, I think, I think there's opportunity to, if, if the right bits of land are available, that, that we can do some things that would be, not only in the, as you said, the school districts benefit, but in the community as a whole. And, so I, I would love to, to have an option with that. Now, the, this state's majority vote required, is that, depending on whether we bond or not, I guess, is, is where that lies, right? It's, it's, it's three fifths.
I don't know. I don't know why I did that.
If you're bonding, isn't it three fifths?
Bonding, three fifths. We're gonna bond it, I'm not sure why I did that.
Were you thinking we might not bond it?
I guess maybe that's what I was thinking, but I would definitely, well, yeah, that, that's not correct.
Okay.
That's not correct. I don't know why I put that in there.
And to, to answer Jill, maybe a question of yours or others watching, the order of the articles on the warrant is dictated by law, I understand, right? And I, I won't go through it, but that's, that's why they are, in the order they are. It doesn't seem like it makes sense, it's not sorted with anyone's agenda in mind other than following statute.
Right. Concept number three is the discussion around an elevator at the high school, junior, senior high school. As you know, we, we have dealt with this issue, we've talked about this, I'm not gonna get into the details. This is the elevator. We have two quotes, you know, we went out and got just quotes, depending on the type of elevator. This one is an elevator that would be a little bit larger, would be able to, would be used not only for students, obviously, but also for moving boxes of paper and equipment up flights instead of carrying it.
Or finishers, things like that.
You got it, right. So this was more, this was, this, this one was a little bit more expensive because of that.
And remind us again, do we have, currently having any students in the junior, senior high school who require?
No.
And what about in the elementary school?
Yes.
What, and?
They're primary aged. So, it's not like right around the corner.
Okay.
It's not tomorrow, but that doesn't, I just wanna caution you, that doesn't mean that someone won't knock on the door tomorrow morning.
Exactly, yep.
The, putting this on the warrant, and it, and if it were to pass, doesn't force us to put an elevator on the building. It gives us the funds to do so.
That's correct.
So given the fact, if there's resounding support for land and the survey, phone survey indicates that the community is ready to move forward, we as a board may decide we aren't, won't do that.
We can forego that, sure, yes, yes.
You have bonding authority, doesn't mean you have to exercise that bonding authority.
I just, I just wanted that to be.
Do the best we could with what we have.
But given, given we know what about, what we know about the student body and, and everything that we know at that time, it may be the right thing to do, but it may be something we might wanna hold our breath another year or what have you.
I think that this next article, Article Four, is along that same line. We're requesting three units that would equal, be equated to six classrooms in order to alleviate the overcrowding and the lack of classrooms for some of our programs at the junior, senior high school. These portable classrooms, the option we have right here is option to purchase, but we could just do a lease for three years. Again, I think it's going to depend, be dependent a little bit on your survey and on your results. You may decide if you get the land and you're getting a favorable response on your survey, very similar to what you just said. You may say, look, and I, maybe we can get our way through the next year bef, or two before we need to do that. So you have that ability to forego, should you get it. But you need to put it out there. Lease, buy, I mean, for preference.
Are they, they don't become permanent structures? Do they get cemented in, and I mean, are they permanent?
Well, they're, they're put on, they have to be installed on a poured slab and and be wired as if they were a permanent structure.
And they need to be secured, too, like if we put them on the pavement, they do need to be secured to that, but not necessarily a foundation, some sort of.
So it's not something that would be?
Permanent, permanent.
They can be removed.
They can be removed.
They're still portable, but you have to install them as if they're permanent structure.
And make sure they're safe and secure.
So you, are you, think we should do this?
Chet, do you have any thoughts on that?
I, I think that, now, this is because of overcrowding of the school.
I think you have to put that out there and let people see that the schools are overcrowded and that we need to. I think, I think it's an issue.
Last year, this one came fairly close to passing compared to other things. I mean, there was, you know, there was an understanding among a significant portion of the voter electorate. The crowding issue's there. In a perfect world, we should see this fail as opposed to something to fix, permanently fix our schools. But, you know, we shall see.
And, and if we put this on the warrant now, and it becomes clear by the time the deliberative session comes around, we could zero out the, the dollar value at that point in time. So, this is our opportunity to put it on, but we have later opportunities to re, to remove it.
All right, are we set? Can I go on? Article number five is, again, your standard warrant article you've had relative to the Capital Reserve Fund. I guess I'd ask you to note forty percent up to $100,000. Is that, are you comfortable with that? Okay. Article number six, this one is on your educating, educationally handicapped, disabled children. This is a twenty percent with a cap of fifty. You okay? Okay. Article seven is your reserve fund for facilities, twenty percent, $50,000 cap.
Repairs and maintenance, yeah.
Yep, repairs and maintenance. You okay? And the last, number eight is your technology account, your trust fund for technology. Again, twenty percent with a $50,000 cap. You okay?
Yep.
Yep.
And the last one is just your standard article for your budget with a, with phrase in it for your default, and we'll have those numbers for you, okay?
Now, when you use the word cap, you mean cap with, with the fund balance.
Yeah, for this year. I, I put that on the, my notes. Mr. Chase asked me to put, have it on the agenda, and you should have a discussion just on that.
All right.
But not tonight.
Not tonight.
Not tonight.
Yeah, we've talked about talking about it enough times.
I know, it's gonna be on, I, I will put it on.
So true.
Can I just ask a question, I think it's for future agenda item, possibly? We had talked about a necessity with kind of with engaging the community with what's going on with the schools. We had some money that we were able to use to, use, to do this phone survey, and I just didn't know if, sometimes people, some of the people in the community might not be involved because they're not aware of votes coming up or meetings coming up or what the meetings exactly are, and I just didn't know if we might consider spending some, or thinking about setting some money aside to get actual poster signs out. I don't know, I don't even know if it's, I mean, in front of the schools, letting them know that there are these dates coming up, these, these three dates.
Well, we do, we do, we do use, like in front of the, the high school, we use the, you know, the board. We do post things on that.
I mean, but I mean visibly around that, letting people know that there's a public hearing, that there's a, that there's a bond hearing, that there's what, why they need to go to these meetings, and then that there's a vote on the date. I mean, I know that most people might, you might think most people are aware, but I've been talking to a lot of people just about being on the school board and all of the dates and the meetings, and just, just as a potential down the road to, we've been talking about how do you engage the community, and I just feel like a lot of it's on our shoulders, and the community's not aware enough to even be engaged sometimes. And if we just had, I don't know how much it costs, I, I mean, I can go find out some information, but I just feel like if I was driving by downtown and I saw a sign that said these three dates on it, get in, you know, vote, don't forget to get involved, come, comes here this information so that on this date there is a vote. I just, just around the town, I don't know what the, if you have to get permission to put it in certain places, or.
I'm not certain of the legality of that, only it in the sense of using public funds. When we put warrant articles out, we have a position on them. We want them passed.
You're just advertising the meeting.
Advertising the meeting.
You can do that.
You're not telling them to vote a certain way or giving them any information, you're just saying, listen, there's.
But the perception is, I mean, there, there's perception and there's reality, I guess. And the perception is you're championing, you know, your cause, depending on when and how you do it, I just wanna, just wanna sort of put that out there, because, you know, it's the same reason you don't send election information or voter information home with the kids, because you don't want to be perceived as, you know, using a mule.
I just, I just, I mean, maybe we can talk about it later. I, I just feel like we're not engaging the community and the parents and getting them to take the initiative to come out and vote as much as we should, and I think we're always careful as to not promote some kind of agenda that we might have, but we don't really have an agenda, we just want them to get out and know what's going on and vote. So I guess, I guess I'm just looking for other avenues, I don't know if it's ever been considered, I just would like to talk about it a little bit.
We've done some things, we've had some of those A-frames with signs on both sides, just reminding people, public hearing tonight, seven o'clock. We've done some things, we've had some of those A-frames with signs on both sides, just reminding people, public hearing tonight, seven o'clock. Remember, we had them out in the front, and we had them, one up at the elementary school, one at the high school, and it was, it was just an A-frame and sign on both sides telling people to go to a public hearing.
But I don't, I mean, I don't even know if people would know what is going to, is going to happen at a public hearing, I don't even know.
The other thing you can think about is maybe we could do, um, a single sheet mailing into every box, reminding them of the dates of meetings, I don't know.
Or put it on, if you have another.
We do do that, that's right, we do, we send it out, that's right, we do, you're right, Sue.
I forgot, we did that.
We get the television we use.
Yeah, we're using that, I love the idea what Forrest did on Monday night. Maybe this could be.
I just think, I just think we're still tapping into the same audience every time we keep turning to Channel thirteen, and, and there is another whole audience that isn't tuning into Channel thirteen, that's all I'm.
Maybe we can do some offline brainstorming of new places to, um, yeah, it's, yeah, you know, a searchlight with a sign underneath. A sign and, you know, where you go to register your car. The whole community walks by that.
I mean, I was even thinking the athletic club down the street, I'm sure a lot of people from New Market go there and just talking to them about just putting it in front of people's faces to see it one more time. Red, white, and blue. Anyway, that's something further, further I consider, so I didn't mean to get off track, I know, it's just, I think it goes along with the, what we're talking about here, so.
Okay, so, that's it for warrant articles, right? Resignations.
I just thought it was important that you see this resignation from Carolyn Prescott, a custodian at the elementary school, has been with the New Market School District for twenty-five plus years, and she's going to, uh, as you can see, she wants to retire in December thirty-first and spend some time with her grandchildren and all that good stuff, so. It was just really an FYI for you to let you know she's doing that, after many years of service, of which we're very grateful. She's done an awesome job at that elementary school and took a lot of pride, every day that you walked in there, she, she was, she had a lot of pride for the building and, and the way it looked and the upkeep, and I, I think all of you who go there and have visited can attest to how nice, how nicely kept that building is.
We, I'm sure we all thank her very much for her years.
Would you like me to send her a letter on your behalf thanking her for her work, would you?
Absolutely, that'd be great. Thank you. It's a lot of dedication there.
Yes.
Any nominations?
None, sir.
And a manifest?
Make a motion that we approve the manifest for December in the amount of two hundred and ninety-four thousand, four hundred and sixty-nine dollars and forty-seven cents.
I'll second that.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Thank you. We've got fresh enrollment numbers, Kathy, you were quoting from this earlier.
I, I just wanted to alert you to the elementary school who picked up, um, students, we picked up eight students there. The elementary school, uh, the numbers and the layout is, is there for you, and in the, uh, in the middle school, we picked up a student, and in the high school, we picked up a student. So we have totally across the district, we picked up eleven new students this month, so. I know, it's always difficult to, to speculate where you're gonna be, but, um, you know that's the name of the game.
So third grade got three, that's gotta change the profile of some of the classes a little bit.
Yeah, actually, they picked up four students in third grade.
Four.
One in fifth grade. Couple in eighth grade, ninth grade, and one in twelfth grade.
Okay. Action plan. Anything to update here?
I, I'm, I think from tonight's meeting, we have a few things to update on it, but right now, I would say it's.
No changes. Still on track for the Cheney property?
Yes, we're waiting for a plan, I met with the architect, and we're waiting for a plan to come back. Um, once that plan is back with the roadway, the, uh, the play area and the green space and the new parking and the increased parking, considering a new entrance into the elementary school for buses only, which would be absolutely wonderful. And so I'm gonna bring that plan, and then we'll move forward when I'll meet with Diane Hardy.
Okay, so.
To bring forward to the planning board.
Right, and the planning board wants to see that before.
Yes, before they.
Action is completed.
Exactly.
Okay, great, thank you. Any other action item, uh, questions? Calendar.
Cross off the eighth for the budget committee.
Yes.
On the seventeenth, the budget committee is hosting a meeting, they're having a guest speaker come on, on that Monday evening to, I don't have any notes.
It's really to talk about the role of the budget committee.
Right. So.
The, the budget committee also has a meeting on, um, s, uh, Monday, December tenth at seven. So I will attend that.
Seven PM in the basement here? Okay. In January, the.
Oh, I'm sorry, uh, also in December, oh, shoot, um, on the fifteenth, the sophomore class is hel, holding a breakfast.
Yeah, saw that email.
Uh, darn it, though, I'm not sure where.
It's at the high school in the cafeteria.
Oh, it is, it's at the high school cafeteria, so there's a, um, uh, breakfast to support the sophomore class on the fifteenth at, um, at the junior, senior high school cafeteria. Shoot, shoot, aim for about eight-ish, eight, eight, nine. You should be going by that, I don't have the details.
They're starting fairly early, as I recall.
I'll be there at five, I'll get the first orange juice, right?
You'll have to stir your own pancakes.
On your December calendar, you also had the potential date for public hearing, we had talked about it, that should be gone. Just alert you to the December, um, vaca, school vacation, uh, the office, the SAU office will be closed on the twenty-fourth and the twenty-fifth, um, but will be open the twenty-sixth, seventh, and eighth, and the following, uh, and on the thirty-first. And closed on New Year's.
The, uh, rescheduled New Hampshire School Board Association Delicate Assembly is coming up on January the nineteenth. Carry with me often, or always, the, um, the packet that goes along with that, if anyone is interested in, in attending that, let me know, not necessarily right now, but they would like to have, uh, have registrations in before it gets too close. Any other January highlights at this point?
Just alert you to the, the public hearings, that, that on, on January tenth.
Sixteenth isn't right.
We may have to look at the public hearing on the sixteenth for the, um, for the budget, we're, we're gonna go back and review that again. We think, I, I looked at it again, I believe we have to move it back to either the fourteenth or the fifteenth in order to accommodate the right number of days.
Now, on the tenth, I thought we had told the budget committee that that was going to be our hearing on the budget. You have it as the public hearing on the bond.
We'll, we'll get you updated on those two dates, we've been, we've been going back and forth on them because of the timelines, as you know, we have to adhere to. Do you think that one?
I'm pretty sure, I, I think, I think you voted on that at one of your meetings to have your public hearing on the tenth, do you recall? No?
I'll go back and look at that, I'll go back and look at that.
What happens at the public hearing? Is that the one that the budget committee is at and the school board is at and?
Right, and it's really a public, it's a budget committee, uh, job, we, it, they hold a public hearing on the budget.
For the town?
For the town, people come.
People have the opportunity to address.
Wasn't the one that they wanted us to stand up and talk at?
I think so.
I thought they did, okay.
Yes, it is.
So we, we need, so that's the date that you're checking on?
And I did get confirmation that they will be there, the auditors.
The auditors.
Can be there, they can be there.
They recommended that we should have the auditors present at the public hearing to discuss our audit and the process, and we'll explain, Linda's gonna explain all the certification and so forth of our auditors, so that people understand the process and what we do in the school department. And that was a recommendation from the budget committee.
So I'm sure that it is the tenth, because I have talked with him about the tenth, yeah. Confirm that with him.
I'll fix that.
Okay. We have some articles of interest, the, uh.
Yeah, I just, uh, found some interesting things for you, there, obviously, there's an article, there's the, the Gifted and Talented Enrichment Newsletter, the kids do that, it's really cute. Uh, the high school newsletter is also in there for you, but I thought, we've always been talking about these demographic things in the seacoast, there was a great article, um, seacoast, uh, jobs are there, housing isn't, that's the seacoast. So there's plenty of jobs in the seacoast, and one of the concerns that people, the workforce have is the lack of housing. Um, the second one was, there's always been a, a concern about brain drain, you know, in the seacoast, people, in New Hampshire, basically, how the young people are actually leaving the state, um, going to work in other places. This article is counter to that notion, that in fact, um, our young people are staying in the state of New Hampshire, are, are buying and trying to buy homes and trying to, uh, locate here and stay here in a permanent way. So, I, these were just good articles I thought would be helpful for you.
And it was a, University of New Hampshire study showed that, um, that, um, between the years of two thousand four and two thousand six, that the, that trend is reversing itself in terms of young people, younger people are starting to stay, so. Yeah, that is interesting.
Okay. And you've also included, uh, the NSBA newsletter I found here this evening. It'll be, uh, good reading for later.
Where, um, where do you get this if you weren't on the school board?
I don't know, I, they were dropped off at our office, plus I got an email, and so it was on a PDF, so I made, I made, matter of fact, I made Sarah's copy tonight just from my computer, but these were dropped off, I don't know where they keep them.
I think they go to the members of the business association.
I get an email as a member of the association, yeah.
Yeah, it is, I think it is.
They're also available at the library. And here, maybe.
They're here, yes, they've dropped them off here.
And I think they are available at the library and somewhere else, I can't remember, but I remember they were talking about it at the meeting.
I would, I would assume they would want people to read this, so, okay.
Sure.
In our own Sarah, did you notice that, that Sarah had written an article for the Business Association newsletter?
Well, that's what I, when I first read it, I thought it was from the high school, something from the high school, and then I realized it wasn't.
So this is their volume one, issue two, so, um, it sounds like they're still getting their pieces together as far as distribution and those sort of things. So you're like a charter writer for this organization. Okay, I believe we've got items to discuss in a non-public session. So I'd ask for a motion, uh, to go into non-public session, the RSA ninety-one dash eight colon three, Roman numeral two, C and D, both, I think, to discuss both land and personnel.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Thank you. Thank you, Penny.